If we could take our seats. We're going to call our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 13th, 2001. Before we do our invocation from Reverend Ted Stackpole at the Compact Family Services and our pledge by Commissioner Rawls, I'm going to ask our sheriff to come up. Sheriff, if you'll come up. And let's do a moment of silence for Lieutenant Mark Ehlum, okay? And if you want to say a few words about yesterday.
Good morning. Thank you all. Yesterday was an extremely difficult day for our community and for our sheriff's office family as we laid to rest Captain Mark Ehlum. Captain Ehlum was not only a friend, but he was also a member of our family at the sheriff's office and one of the most dedicated and hard-working members of our team that we've ever had the pleasure of working with. He certainly leaves behind a huge void, not only at the jail, but also in the community. Mark was known far and wide for his love of children and for some of the decorations that he would put out during the holidays at Christmas. In fact, I referenced his house yesterday as the crown jewel of Crescent City during Halloween because Mark would go to such lengths to put out all the decorations that his wife would purchase and painstakingly make sure that everything was placed appropriately so that the children could come by and enjoy it. And he was a true public servant and a wonderful member of our community, and he'll live in our hearts forever.
Steve. Thank you. Reverend Stackpole?
Would you bow your heads with me? Dear Almighty Father, today we give thanks for our beloved Putnam County. We have been blessed to find employment here, practice our faith here, discover enrichment through our friendships and families, and as the world continues to change at such an accelerated rate, we find peace in knowing that you are the same yesterday, today, and forever. I ask for peace upon those who have lost loved ones, healing for those that are sick, and happiness for those who are consumed with sadness. Today I pray for the unity and synergy of this Board of County Commissioners and those with influence that find themselves at this meeting today. Lord, I believe that each and every one of these commissioners is on assignment for you in order to benefit those who live and work in this beloved county. May you guide their thoughts, direct their actions, and release your wisdom for each and every point of action taken today. And we will continue to be thankful, no matter what outcomes take place today and in the future. Have your way in this place, in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Please, you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff, thank you so much for that. And thank you Reverend Stackpole, and thank you Commissioner Rawls. Do keep in your thoughts and prayers today. Our administrator, Mr. Suggs, is out sick today. He's battling some sickness that he's been dealing with, so we do ask that you pray for him and keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Commissioners, the next item is approval of the minutes as listed in the agenda.
Move approval.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner.
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further? Any further?
That's my mic.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. And now we'll wait just one moment and go into port authority. Our agenda says 9:05 for port authority. It's 9:04. Now it's 9:05. Good deal. All right, we're going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting and go into our port authority. Commissioners, we need to, item A, approval of the minutes as stated in the agenda.
I move approval of the minutes as stated.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Any public comment on port authority? Any public comment on port authority? All right. Any general discussion amongst the commissioners on port authority items? Seeing none, we'll close our port authority and go back to our regular Board of County Commission meeting. And before we get started, I'm going to take a point of privilege, and I want to call up Epicure. Come up. Ed, would you bring Julianne? Come up to the podium. We'd like to hear about your organization a little bit, and then we have a check that we're going to present to you today. Yeah, Ed's not afraid to speak at all.
She does that often. As you know, Epicure, it's, what, two years?
Two years in May.
Two years in May. It was founded in St. Johns County by Sunny and her husband Ken. The main goal in it is to eliminate food waste. A lot of people, when you say that, you know, you look at things and people go, well, you're feeding the hungry. Well, yes, we are. But we're also eliminating the food going into landfills. You know, the, I just discovered just a few months ago through Sunny and her knowledge that a head of lettuce takes eight years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years to completely go down in the landfill and deteriorate. So by taking the food out of the landfill, we're helping the environment and, you know, the things that go into the landfill that create methane gas and things like that. Along with that, we are doing my heart in feeding the hungry, feeding people that need food. They're coming, you know, as y'all know, by the hundreds. The last few weeks, we haven't fed as many as we have been doing in the past year because of the stimulus checks and tax returns and stuff like that. People are getting back money and they don't really need us right now. But we're doing between three and 400 the last couple of weeks. But up until that time, Putnam County was doing 783 families a week. At our Friday distribution, we're doing two mobile distributions throughout the county wherever our warehouse manager, Jennifer, can find the people, the volunteers and the people that want to help staff it. We've been in Interlaken, we've been in Melrose, we've been in Barden, we've been in Wallaca, we've been in Crescent City. Those are just to name a few of the communities we've been into. And we do, but we've been doing about two of those a week also where we feed between 150 and 200 people at each one of those. So we're feeding, I say people, families. We're feeding between 1,215 families a week with Epicure. You know, they're just, they're just coming by the droves and it's needed, sorely needed to be done. And so I just, you know, I can't thank Sunny and her husband enough for reaching out to Putnam County. And former clerk of court, Tim Smith, who reached out to me and said, you know, Ed, I know this is your heart, and we'll get this done. And by what's happening this morning, I want you to understand that I appreciate the staff. Julianne has helped us immensely, walking us through things. Mr. Suggs has allowed the, and that's how valuable he is to us. Not only is he my friend, but he is valuable to Putnam County, and I know y'all realize this. I know that. I mean, you know, he helps where he can, but he's allowed the staff to help us chase funds and find things like that. And then Julianne, like I said, she's, she's been back and forth with Sunny, emailing, you know, trying to get everything set. And what's happening this morning will help us for about five to six months, along with what St. Johns County has done for us. So it's a combined effort of both counties, both county commissions. I mean, you know, just the other day, y'all had your thing where you put the counties together. It's just how we can work together as people, is what I see.
Well, Ed, let me tell you, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, out of the last year's CARES Act money, that Commissioner Turner was the chairman at that time and led this group, we're going to present a check for $40,000 to Epicure today. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hang on one second, Mr. Chair. Sarah's going to go first. Sarah, go ahead. Harvey, Cef.
I got, I got.
Ladies and gentlemen here, can you look up for me real quick? One, two, three, and one more. I did, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then we'll get back to our agenda real quick. Human Resources. You hear Angela? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. It is a great pleasure that I am here to announce the employee of the quarter. The employee of the quarter is Kathy Tillman. At this time, I'd like to have her come up to the podium with her executive director, Jim Troyano.
Good deal.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Jim Troyano, the executive director for Putnam County Planning and Development Services. One of the areas of my responsibility is to oversee and help our animal control center. And I do have the honor on behalf of Mr. Suggs and our entire executive team, as well as this board, to recognize Kathy Tillman. So I just want to say, and when you look at the recognition of how we look at employee of the quarter, it's, you're looking at going above and beyond. It's just not the regular, everyday duties. And Kathy truly exhibited for well over a year, above and beyond. As an animal control officer, when we had a vacancy created, or at least an interim vacancy created by the former supervisor being out on leave, Kathy took on both roles, never being a supervisor before, never dealing with a leadership role, and still handling her duties as an animal control officer. She not only did a good job, she did a great job. She asked questions, she took corrective criticism, she wanted to improve not only herself and her performance, but the performance of her staff and all that she encountered, plus keeping in mind how we can best care for the animals in our control. So she did this for over a year and never complained at all. And she knows that to be the truth because she didn't. All she wanted was the best. Kathy then had an opportunity to apply for and was selected to be our animal control manager. She is now the leader at the shelter while still handling the duties as an animal control officer, as we're still in the process of trying to fill that position. And so she's doing so much through writing new policy, through training her staff, through implementing different techniques that we need at that center to make us not only more proficient, but more professional. So I'm extremely proud of her, and on everyday basis, I see new strides that she's making, and more important, I see the strides that our staff's making. So again, on behalf of the entire team, I congratulate Kathy for being selected as our employee of the quarter. She certainly will be now eligible to be in the process of the selection for the employee of the year. And with that, she will also receive $100 check from this board as a token of our appreciation to Kathy and all that she does. So again, I'd like to all say thank you to Kathy and just put our hands together for a job that's well done. So I've gotten a nod. So, Mr. Chair, would you help me, please, and the rest of the commission make a presentation to her? We have a certificate of appreciation, and I'd like to read it before we present it, if I may. It says, Employee of the Quarter Presented to Kathy Tillman in recognition of exemplary service for the quarter ending June 30, 2021. Awarded the certificate from the Putnam County Board of Commissioners. Given this 13th day of April, Larry Harvey, Board Chair, Terry Suggs, County Administrator.
All right, I'm not standing on the chair, but I'll still take the picture. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and congratulations, Kathy, on your achievement. Next is our property appraiser, the Honorable Tim Parker. And he's bringing up one of my favorite people, who has a smile all the time.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for the opportunity to recognize one of my staff. This recognition should have actually taken place a year ago today, as today actually marks her sixth-year anniversary, but due to circumstances beyond our control, that wasn't possible until today. So Sandra Slaughter began employment at the Putnam County Property Appraisers Office on April 13th, 2015. Sandra has been and continues to be an important part of our office for these past six years. Sandra assists our customers filing for homestead exemption. However, her role is very broad, and she is able to help the citizens of Putnam County on so many different levels, having been previously employed in other areas of Putnam County government. I've received many compliments from citizens of Putnam County over these past few years with words like, "helpful," "gracious," "appreciative," "professional," "thoughtful," and "pleasant." Please join me in congratulating Sandra for her six years of loyal service to the citizens of Putnam County. Her husband, Greg, is here with her. Greg, you want to stand up? And as are several of her fellow employees. So we have this plaque that reads, "Certificate of Appreciation. We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Sandra Slaughter for outstanding service and contributions to the citizens of Putnam County for five years and award this certificate from Putnam County Property Appraiser of Placa, Florida, this 13th day of April." Tim Parker, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, you've got to come up here and get a picture.
Yes.
And you can bring Greg if you want to, but you don't have to. It's your moment. Congratulations.
Tell me if you actually live in the county. You've been with us a long time.
Yes, Jeff, you remember me from U D. Yes. Oh, thank you, Tim.
Oh, Sarah first, please.
We need to put a ribbon on that chair, Jim, for you.
Okay. Right up here, please.
He's not going to have to use his Stairmaster tonight, are you, Doc?
One, two, three. Mr. Parker, can you move over just a little bit to the right? There you go. Sorry, to your left, there you go. Sorry. Here we go, one more time. Look up here. One, two, three. Let me just make sure it works.
You want Greg in it, too?
Come on up, Greg. Get a picture.
Come on.
Everybody get up here.
And you should have seen the face he made when I said you were so nice and sweet.
Oh, wow.
Just throwing him under the bus.
Yeah.
I'll just throw him under the bus.
He didn't know you was going to abuse him on the way up, did he?
One more time, here we go. Look up here. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Thank you guys so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. And we do miss you being here.
Oh, well, yeah.
They have an opening.
Don't do that.
No, shoot. Don't say that in front of her boss. All right, thank you very much, Honorable Tim Parker and Sandra. Appreciate your years of service. Julianne, next item is administration introduction of new employees.
Yes, Chairman, and if you'll allow me, both of our employees this morning work under the direction of Executive Director Jim Troyano, so I'd like him to come up and introduce his new employees for us this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Again, Jim Troyano from Putnam County Planning and Development Services. It's my honor today to recognize two of our newest employees in planning and development services. I'm sure that this board individually has met them. However, being formally introduced today, I think, is very important. I'd like to start with our senior manager, who took Mike Brown's place, is Mr. Gabriel Quintus. Gabriel comes to us from the city of Titusville. He has been doing planning for several years. He's been doing a great job since he's hit the ground running here, putting things together, looking at our processes, and trying to make us more efficient in how we operate our organization. So we're very pleased to have him on board. He is a Putnam County resident, recently moved here. So he and his family are enjoying the great wealth that we have in Putnam County, but he also brings to the job some great talent, and we're looking for a lot from him for the shoes that he has to fill of those of Mike Brown. So Gabriel, would you like to say something real quick?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, it's a, it's a great honor and privilege to serve in this capacity, and I look forward to helping manage growth in a sustainable and in a good manner to serve the citizens of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'd like to introduce our senior planner, Ms. Wendy Hickey. Wendy came from the county of Flagler. We certainly had a great steal bringing Wendy over to us. She is a resident of Putnam County. She lives in Pomona Park. And actually, she's been here for a little while. You were making a commute from here to there. So with her brings a tremendous experience, not only from county planning, from Flagler County, but also from cities down in Volusia County. So she brings a tremendous knowledge to the game. She's bringing a lot of things and experience, much like Gabriel, from other areas, just to give us that insight that we need to see and how we can evaluate our programs to ensure that we're providing the best level of service. And I can tell you, I'm very proud of our team that we have with Gabriel at the helm now. Wendy is our senior planner. We have Ms. Nancy Brown as one of our, our planning technician, Pam Washington as our permit technician, and of course, Ms. Jenny Kidd. There's a lot of work that's being thrown at them. There's a lot, there's a lot going on in Putnam County, so I'm very pleased with everything that they're doing. And I'd like to offer an opportunity for Ms. Wendy, please, to come up here and just say hello to the board. Wendy?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to say I really am very happy to be here, and I see a lot of good things to happen in Putnam County in the future.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, our next presentation, Crystal Burks with Haven Hospice. If you'll meet me at the podium. And Commissioner Bill Pickens will be reading the proclamation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2021-018, National Health Care Decision Month, April 2021. Whereas National Health Care Decision Day is recognized across our nation on April 16th, 2021, to raise the public awareness of the need to plan ahead for health care decisions, especially those related to end-of-life care and medical decisions making when patients are unable to speak for themselves, and to encourage the specific use of advanced directives to communicate these important health care decisions. Whereas many Putnam County, Florida residents have not yet prepared for health care decisions in times of crisis or at end-of-life, nor had important conversations with their families and their health care with their families and documented those decisions. Whereas, as is likely a significant reason for these low percentages is that there is both a lack of awareness and an uncertainty in the public about advanced directives. Whereas, one of the goals of the Health Care Decision Day is to raise awareness and provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced directives, as well as to encourage medical professionals and lawyers to volunteer their time and efforts to improve public knowledge and increase the number of citizens with advanced directives. Whereas Haven Hospice endorses this event and is committed to educating the public during the month of April to stress the importance of discussing health care choices and executing advanced directives to make their wishes known. Done, ordered, adopted, this 13th day of April, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adopt this proclamation.
We have proper motion?
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it.
Yeah, my notes are on my phone. Thank you for the proclamation. It's, this one's a little bit different than what we do every year for National Hospice and Palliative Months, so I just wanted to stress the importance. Haven has, we recognize National Health Care Decision Day every year, obviously, the month of April. But, you know, as we progress through these times of, you know, what we've been going through for the past year and a half, you know, individuals get into a situation where they're unable to speak for themselves. So having advanced directives is important. So I just want to encourage everyone in the room, or if you have someone at home that hasn't done so, to, you know, reach out. We do have programs that are free to anyone that is interested, that we can help with those discussions. So that's what, that's what this is about, and that's what this month is about. So I encourage you to take advantage of those opportunities, and thank you for the proclamation.
Our next order of business is Mary Garcia. Jonathan is going to do that? Okay. And Commissioner Rawls is going to read this. And Commissioner Rawls is going to read this.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce to you Jonathan Peters, who is one of our major crimes detectives and whose primary responsibility is investigating victims' crimes against victims of sexual battery.
Thank you, sir.
This is the proclamation Number 2021-019, Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April 2021. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in our community, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and whereas this year marks the 20th anniversary of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and this year's campaign is we can build safe online space and promote how to practice consent online, build respectful online communities, and where the campaign calls on new partners and the community members to help expand sexual assault prevention efforts, support survivors, and ensure the next generation fosters attitude that promote healthy relationships, equity, and respect. And whereas effective prevention and awareness programs succeed because of partnerships created amongst families, social services, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby declares the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Putnam County, and calls upon all citizens, communities, agencies, civic organizations, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to educate the community, thereby preventing sexual assault and strengthening the communities in which we live. We join advocates of the community across Putnam County, Florida, in taking action to prevent sexual violence each day of the year, and as an opportunity to create change in the future. Be it therefore resolved that the Board of County Commissioners participates in and supports all persons in making a conscious effort to prevent sexual assaults, done, ordered, and adopted this thirteenth day of April, 2021. Mr. Chair, I move approval of this proclamation.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Rawls.
Check it.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Further discussion? All in favor, signify. Oops, I'm sorry. Commissioner Adams, check.
In looking this one up, I appreciate the Sheriff's Office's efforts. The numbers were almost 100 about a decade and a half ago, and it looks like 2019, which is the last reported. We only had 26 incidences, which is kudos to you guys. I have an issue with the proclamation. I don't support the proclamation because of the wording of the proclamation. I don't support anything where we talk about social equity, first of all, because of how it's defined. And even if you go back and research the people that are pushing for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, what that means publicly, I'm not for it. I also am not for, as a youth director in my church, for teaching children how to practice consent online. That's something I'm against. I believe in abstinence. And so I stand against this particular proclamation the way it's written.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign.
Aye.
Thank you. It carried four to one. Thank you very much. If we can get our picture taken.
Y'all want to stay up here? We should call the block and leave. Sarah, do you wanna go there?
Let's enlighten the victims' advocates up to you. Okay, sure, please. Do we have? Yeah, let's come up. Here, let me get out of the way, and y'all, okay? I'll stand on the end. You know what? I'll come up there with the board. How's that sound?
I'm kinda late.
There, yeah.
Okay, one up here for me. One more, please. Let me make sure it looks good. It is. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
I want the short next time.
They pressed two pictures at once. Thank y'all. Very much appreciated. Can't read it there. Our next item is going to be polled until May. At this point, Ms. Elizabeth Payne with the North Florida Regional Planning Council. The next item, G, is Cars, Riggs, and Ingram LLC, Presentation of the Financial Year 2020 Financial Audit. And by the way, this did not put me to sleep at 1:30 last night to 4 o'clock. I had a chance to go over it. And before you get started, I want to say something. I really like the data sets that are in this book. I really appreciate some of that stuff that we've, that I was able to glean over, so thank you.
We're very happy to be here this morning. My name is Frank Mason. I'm a partner with the firm. Our practice works out of three offices. I'm based in our Gainesville office. We also have an office here in Putnam County, as well as in Jacksonville. And with me this morning is Amy Miller. She is also a partner with our firm. And we're going to run through the financial statements briefly, but I wanted to take a quick moment to thank all of the officer staffs that helped us get through this process. It takes us about 2,000 hours to do this work. We begin in roughly in August, and that harassment continues even still today as we try to wrap up the final pieces of our audit process. So we're very much appreciative of all the effort of the teams in the county. It's a huge production. And, you know, as you can see, like you said, it's quite a bit of work, and we're very proud of that. Putnam County is our first county to present this year, so we're excited to be here. Things have been weird. The timing has been weird for all of us, and so we're in a different platform of delivery. Oftentimes, we're working much more in a remote environment today, and we're happy that you were able to accommodate that so that we can be timely. I'm gonna turn it over to Amy. She's gonna give you the best news, which is you've got the cleanest of opinions that you can get on the board. The audit opinions are unmodified, which is as good of audit report as you can get. So Amy's gonna run through some of the specifics of the financial statement audit, and we'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. Thank you again for having us this morning. Again, my name is Amy Miller, and I'm gonna run through a summary, a quick summary, of your audit report and the results of the audit. On page 144 of your big audit book is a very good summary of the results of what we do. And as you can see there, we do separate audits, one of the financial statements, and another one of your federal and state grant programs, all of which were clean opinions, as Frank said, all are unmodified opinions. And in the financial statement opinions, this includes opinions on the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each of the five major funds, which were the General Fund, Miscellaneous Grant Fund, Better Place Plan Fund, Waste Management Fund, and East Putnam Water Fund. Those were the five major funds this year, audited separately. And the aggregate remaining funds also. So all of those do have a clean, unmodified opinion. Also, on that summary, you will see that there were no material weaknesses found to report. There was one finding reported, as you can see on page 145, and that is classified as a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting. That finding is described again on page 145, and it is in relation to the fleet inventory, because there was a material adjustment that had to be made at the end of the year to agree the financial statements to the inventory, the physical inventory that was taken. It is our understanding that, you know, there was a response to that finding. It is our understanding that is being responded to currently with the change over into a new accounting system for that inventory for this year. Also, on page 144 in that summary, you will see the federal and state grant programs reported. Again, that was an unmodified clean opinion. The county expended a total of approximately $3.5 million in federal expenditures during fiscal year 2020, and $3.7 million of state expenditures during the year. We tested one major federal program and two major state projects this year, which met the criteria for major programs to be tested. And there were no matters of noncompliance in that testing to report. The county, again, qualified as a low-risk audity under federal uniform guidance for those audits. In the annual report, we are also required by the rules of the State Auditor General to report to you in a management letter, which starts on page 136. In that management letter, we are required to report to you the financial condition assessment procedures as of the end of the fiscal year. We do those procedures, and we have to look to see if you meet the definition of financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition as defined in the Florida statutes. The procedures show that the county does not fall into the condition of financial emergency. And you also do not meet the statutory definition of deteriorating financial condition. Both good results. Additionally, based on your 2020 expenditures, the available general fund balances are sufficient to cover approximately four months of general operating expenditures in the next year. That is the same as we reported to you last year as well. So your available balances are better than the GFOA's recommendation of two months. We also required by the state to comment on whether any prior findings have been corrected. We have reported here that all prior-year findings were corrected, and none were repeated this year. The report on page 138 of your audit book is on tests of your compliance with Florida Statute Section 218.415 regarding investments. We saw no issues with investment compliance and have reported here that, in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with this statute. And our report on page 139 is also required by the state, which attests to the county's compliance with certain sections of Florida Statute, Chapter 365, regarding authorized expenditures and uses of E911 funds. Based on our tests, we have reported that the county complied in all material respects with these statutes as well. This concludes the summary of the audit, and as always, we appreciate management, staff, and all those involved, and the commissioners as well, in helping us throughout this process. As Frank said, it is a very long process, and is a lot of information that we have to gather over a very long period of time. And thank you so much to Susan and her staff, and Matt also and your staff, for getting us everything that we need and responding to all of our questions timely. And at this time, we'll take questions if there is any.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Rawls? So I had a couple of residents reach out to me and went through some research last year regarding expenditures made. I gave this over to the auditing firm. Apparently, it doesn't rise to the occasion of falling under the financial audit. I brought it to their attention because I think that it does involve fraud. So I've turned this now over to Human Resources to look at. I did explain to them, I think they have a conflict of interest, working for Putnam County, since they audit the Chamber of Commerce and the relationship that they have with the Chamber via having a member. But they informed me that I was incorrect. I think they're incorrect, but I just want to bring this to everybody's attention for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Mr. Turner?
I don't have anything. I-
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we appreciate all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item will be our public comment on agenda items. Astrid, do you have blue cards? We are going to take public comments on agenda items. I'm sorry? Okay. We have speaker cards about the comp plan today, so why don't we, we'll wait till that, till we get to that point. So next item, if I see nobody else want to speak on agenda items, we'll go to our consent agenda. Commissioner Rawls, anything you want to pull?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Pickens?
G.
Item G? Commissioner Turner?
I have nothing further.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, that?
Item E.
Item E. Okay, the chairman will entertain a motion on items A, B, C, D, F, H, I, and J.
Should've moved.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussions on those items? Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Okay, unanimous. Item will go in order. Item E, is that Mr. Adams, that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just thought this was an opportunity to make a statement, I guess. I'm all for the work plan. The work plan looks like everything we needed to be for there is it, have that access to that particular, to water and sewer and all that kind of stuff. But I was elected to represent all the people in the county, and this is a very small number of people that have access to these facilities. And the bottom line is, the rest of the county is paying for a subset of people to have access to services that almost no one, actually, I don't believe anyone in my district, has access to water, sewer, and that kind. And at some point, we gotta either figure out a way to make this solvent, or at least break even, or we gotta stop expanding it, regardless of what this plan is. The rest of the county should not be paying load for a small subset of 2,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you. My screen's not working, so I'll try to keep an eye out. Commissioner Rawls?
I agree with Commissioner Adams' statement. I've been saying this for years, you know. When I was in Melrose last week, I asked the folks there to raise their hands if they had a water bill in East Palaca for water and sewer. You know, we're stuck with this thing. I don't know that there is a way to get out of it. We've taken people off of wells and septic, and it's unfortunate that the utility's not able to float its own boat. But at this point, I don't see that we have any other option unless we're gonna go drill wells and put septic tanks in the ground for folks, because, you know, we've crossed that bridge, and there's no going back. So if we encourage future development in East Palaca toward the Hastings area, that might be an opportunity. But right now, I'll be honest with you, if I lived in the area where there's water and sewer available and I was on well and septic, I would not opt for almost a hundred dollar a month bill in lieu of my well and septic, and no monthly overhead for that. So I do appreciate your comments, and I support what you said.
Here's where, I mean, in reference to that last statement you made, Mr. Rawls, that state statute, I believe, says that they have to connect. So I'm not understanding why we're not having people connect. It gives them 365 days from the day that's in front of their property to connect, or 90 days if they have an issue with their well or septic. So why we're not enforcing that, I have no idea, because that's partly why it's not solvable as far as financially, it's not making it, because we don't have enough people connected to it in the areas where it is. I think we need to take steps to ensure everyone connects before we expand.
When I asked about this, the answer I got was that we didn't have the money to hold off the lawsuits that would come as a result of that. We're not enforcing it. I think the worst thing that we do is putting our lift stations in people's private yards, and then we maintain those lift stations in perpetuity. I think we made a lot of mistakes over there, but there's just no way around it right now until we come up with a more viable solution. That's gonna be to get more people to hook to it or increase the water and sewer rates to have everybody paying their fair share. But I agree with you. I have well and septic, and I pay for somebody else's water bill as well.
Yeah. I don't know that I have an issue with the technology behind it, because I don't know enough about it. But the bottom line is, we need to, at some point, direct staff to encourage everyone that's in front of one of these water or sewer lines to connect in order to make our water management, whatever we want to call it, financially feasible. Otherwise, we're wasting a lot of other people's money who get no service from this every month.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, that. Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Usually, when it comes to economic development, you have to put out a little before you get a little. Having sewer and water services in the areas of Putnam County is not a bad thing, and you have to invest a little. At some point in the future, I thoroughly believe that it'll not only break even, it could possibly even make a little money. I know that we're having to pay it right now, but the payments on the sewer plant come out of the Better Place money. So while the residents of Putnam County more than definitely put money into it through their sales tax, through their extra sales tax, it's not- their sales tax, through their extra sales tax, it's not property taxes that are going into the East Palaca sewer project at this time that I'm aware of. And so, yeah, we're having to put a little money in it, but it's been going on for years. And while I understand what you're saying, and don't disagree to an extent, I still believe that you're going to have to invest a little bit in order to get the services that you need. Without doing that upfront, we'll never, we'll never have those services. And if you noticed, most of the areas where they've started at, we've gotten grants from water management to do this. So that hasn't cost the taxpayers of Putnam County money, except through what they pay water management, one way or the other. So it hasn't cost them additional monies to get a grant from water management. And the reason that we were able to get those grants and hook up those areas were simply because those septic tanks from those low-lying areas at Dunn's Creek and Elgin Road in that area in there leak into the river. And so that's why they're trying to get those septic tanks off of, out of the ground there and get them on a system to where they don't pollute the river to the extent that they're doing it at this time. So while I agree with some of what you're saying, I understand even the theory that you're using to get there, but very little of this money has come out of property taxes directly from the people. It's come from water management, which is definitely property taxes, but you're going to pay it to them one way or the other. And the Better Place plan is what we're using to pay off the sewer plant in East Palaca that's there, whether we like it or not, because it was done before anybody was here, it was put in. So that's something we inherited, and all we can do is try to move it forward in a manner that at some day, it will become profitable, and that's the goal. But it's going to take a little upfront investment before we get there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I appreciate those comments. I was going to say about the same thing. The health of the river is very important, and we got to kind of crawl before we walk and walk before we run.
So...
I'm sorry, Mr. Adams?
I'm going to respond, yes, sir. I agree with most of what you're saying, Mr. Turner. Alls I'm saying is that we have people that aren't connected that have it in front of their house, state statute mandates that they connect. We need to have water management in ourselves enforce state statute. I don't think enforcing state statute puts you at liability of a lawsuit. If it does, then we need to lobby our state representatives to change state statute, because that makes no sense to me whatsoever. As far as money's coming from grants and other things, every dime that we vote to spend, unless we have some billionaire that comes in here and writes us a check, is taxpayer money. I don't care if it's a grant. I don't care if it comes from a federal government, state government, or locally. It's still taxpayer money, and we all pay into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion on item E.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Have it. Mr. Pickens, item G?
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss this with, I guess, with nobody pulling us but me. I've spoke with staff about this and to Jay Tilton, so I guess his commission feels...
I was going to pull it.
Feel that this is the best, this is the best way to go on this. I just wanted some discussion on that. I understand the situation, but I don't know if the proper terminology that he's using is correct, because he can still do the job, because you can still get the product. The forced, what's the word, Julian?
Forced majority.
Right, exactly.
Act of God.
Yeah. Act of God would be that he would not be able to complete this project. So I just wanted some discussion to see if this is our best option, or to do something else, rather than just pony up.
Yeah. Okay. Julianne, would you like to take that?
I believe that Mr. Krebs and Mr. Tilton are here and can have some discussion with us for that.
Mr. Tilton, would you come down, please? And, you know, I do think we're going to see more of this as the market's tightening up and the availability. We're going to have to almost vote on it and get these things approved out there and get them working almost immediately for these prices to stay effective for us. I don't know how we do that.
Right. Well, and for your information, as soon as the board authorizes it, the funds are available. So as soon as, you know, theoretically, as soon as that action is taken by the board, the PO is eligible to be rendered and contract documents are assembled. So as soon as that decision's made, the funds are there and available for them to lock those in.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tilton?
Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr.?
I guess before we get too deep into this, I just wanted to say that this is a product of the times. It's not a pleasant product. It's not a pleasant place to be if you're in Mr. Krebs' position.
That's right.
It's not a very pleasant place to be if you're sitting at this diocese where we are today. So all I can do, and I've gone back and forth on this for a week, I've known about this situation for more than a week, and I've gone back and forth, back and forth, and back and forth on it. And the only thing I can do is settle down on what I think's fair.
That's right.
And what right. Originally, I thought that he had waited and drug his feet on ordering the liner. I found out that not to be the case, that he ordered it within two weeks of when the contract was let to him, and there was a, that was when the storm hit Texas and it wasn't available and couldn't get it, and by the time it was available, it'd gone up 30% or thereabout.
Yes, sir.
So I'm telling you, I've struggled over this big time, because with my outside hat on, I would really like to help Mr. Krebs out. With my commissioner hat on, it's hard to do it, because it's public money, but it's money that we have in the landfill. It's money that we have that we'll never miss. I know it's public money, and I don't want to make light of public money, but I've really had to, I've really had to give a lot of thought on what would be the fair and correct and the right thing to do. And so before they get started, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, this is a tough decision for me. It really is. But I think, I think before we get started, the county needs to try to help the guy out. I just, it's not, I don't see it being his fault.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Rawls?
It wasn't a tough decision for me. And when prices started going up in my industry, I had to do the exact same thing. I went to my customers, and I said, "We're going to postpone your project until prices come down." And I use the force majeure clause, because it's either an act of God, an act of Congress, or an act of terrorism. Take your pick. Nobody chose to be in the position that we're in right now. Prices are absolutely out of control. I think it would be very rude and disrespectful for the citizens of this county to try to cost a contractor 20%. I mean, it might be all of your profit and overhead, for all we know, on that job. And that is not what we should be looking at. And we're going to, we need to be prepared to see a lot more of this in the future, because prices aren't coming down. We took a 15% price increase yesterday on plastics. So hopefully, your price is locked in on this.
Mr. Pickens? Hang on, Mr. Tilton.
And that's, that's the reason I wanted to have this conversation, because I didn't understand that he had ordered the product in time. If he drug his feet, that's another story. Do I want to put a hardship on a business, especially a local business? No, and you're local, correct?
Yeah.
That's right. So, and I have struggled with this, and we worked the right thing, there's no question about that. And in our conversations with Jay, I said, you know, if we do something else, will that delay, you know, if we have to go to another contractor or something, that delay the progress of the sale to where we get into a situation to where it's not finished in time and the other sale's full? So there's a lot of things to take into consideration, but I appreciate this conversation. And just this little bit of information will help me with my decision, no question.
And before we move on to you, I want to say, I struggle with it too, but at the end of the day, we do have a local contractor that was, that this situation was out of his hands. And I think, Mr. Rawls, you harp on, not harp, you preach on direct purchases. We mitigated some of the costs by doing a direct purchase. Yeah, we're going to spend a little bit more than we planned, but it's okay. It's not the end of the world. But I do think, like my opening statement was, we're going to see more of this if we don't really try to get moving a little faster on these projects. And it's out of your control, some of these things are. So we're going to see that going into the future big time. Mr. Tilton? Go ahead, Mr.?
I think that, Mr. Chairman, that's the main thing we need to look at here, is that it is absolutely out of control, out of his control. If it was something where he had done something wrong, or waited too long to order and then the snowstorm hit, or whatever the case may be, but that just wasn't the case here. The best I can tell, he did everything right, like he's supposed to do, and just got stuck in a bad spot.
That's right.
You know, I, I'm with Commissioner Rawls. I won't sign a contract right now that doesn't have an escalation clause in it. I refuse, because I'm too old to do stuff for practice. And so, you know, I think that that's a position that we're fixing to put this young man in. We're fixing to put a local contractor who took this job into a position where he either makes no money or loses money on the project, or turns it over to the bond company, worst-case scenario for us. Because then it's going to drag the job out for months, and we're going to run out of space at the landfill where we should have had months of additional room. We're going to run out of space while we're waiting on the bond company to send somebody in to finish up. That's not good for anybody. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm willing to listen to whatever they have to say, but I don't need to hear it. I'm ready to move forward right now.
Hang on, Mr. Adams, that has to delay.
So I guess my only question is, is kind of the Mr. Rawls' statement, is did we lock in the price? Or are we going to, so that's locked in? Okay. So if we agree to this, then it's not going to change again. So when I read this, my concern was more along, same along lines as everyone else, but my concern was if we decide not to approve it and we put it out to bid again, the whole bid might be a disaster. So I was supporting it under that guise, to be honest with you, just taking a more approach, holistic approach, when I see these posts on, you know, a sheet of plywood's $95 now, and it was, the same sheet was, you know, $32 last year. CDX, I bought some plywood to build a little project for my kids. It was $8.75 a year and a half ago last night, I did a little thing for them. I paid $36 for a sheet of OSB board yesterday. So, yeah, I'm all for this, because I fear putting it back out to bid, to be honest.
Well, Mr. Tilton, you don't...
Y'all don't want me to muddy up the water, and y'all want to go ahead and vote?
I think we're good.
Don't oversell the product, it's already sold. Mr. Turner, you want to have a comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we move this agenda item forward and accept.
Second.
A proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. We're going to take a three-minute recess. All right, we're going to take a three-minute recess. Mr. Jim, if you're ready to present.
I am, Mr. Chair. Is this on? Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Jim Troiano, the Executive Director for Putnam County Planning and Development Services. Today I bring you an ordinance, I'd like to read by title. This is our simulated gambling ordinance that we're bringing to you. Ordinance number 2021-011, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, amending Article III, Supplemental Use, Regulations of the Land Development Code, relating to simulated gambling devices in Internet cafes, specifically creating Section 3 dot 02 dot 20, setting forth findings of fact, setting forth authority, intent, scope, and purpose, providing for definitions, providing for a prohibition against the use of simulated gambling devices, providing for exemptions, providing for conflicts with state law, providing for violation, enforcement, penalties, and remedies, providing for conflicts, providing for severalability, providing for repeal, providing for directions to the codifier, and providing an effective date. Mr. Chair, this is a topic that's been around since August of 2017, through several, five extensions of our moratorium. We're now at a position, after receiving input from the Putnam County Planning Commission, who met on January 27th in a four-to-two fashion, voted to recommend to send this draft ordinance to the, a draft ordinance to the Board. On February the 9th, the Board received that ordinance, however, had a different direction. And so it gave direction to staff to ban all simulated gambling devices in Internet cafes. Mr. Chair, following that meeting on February the 9th, on the 10th, the Planning Commission heard the new version of this banned simulated gambling device Internet cafe ordinance, and voted in a five-zero fashion in favor of recommending it to the Board of County Commissioners. Today, Mr. Chair, you have this ordinance in front of you for discussion, and we have been communicating with the Sheriff's Office, our stakeholders, and we present to you what we believe, after talking to each of the Commissioners individually, is an ordinance that's prepared now for your review and consideration.
I do want to say, before we start calling on Commissioners, how much I appreciate you sitting down with me and addressing the problems that I was hearing in the community, and wordsmithing some of the things that we found to be issues. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the staff, and I appreciate what you said about meeting with all the Commissioners. So it's very important to get that done ahead of time, and since we can't meet collectively outside of a public hearing, that's really a good. None of us know what everybody talked about, so we're good there. So, Mr. Turner, you had your light on first, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I'm going to support this today. I know that you know I have issues about it, but as part of that support, I want to make my comment. And my comment is, I don't think we've taken this far enough. I think we've done what the Commission told you to do at the last meeting, but at the first juncture, when we sent this to the Planning Commission, at that point, the Commission advised, the Commission advised at that point that we wanted to regulate and restrict activities, and then it went to banning. I'm okay with that. Basically, what we've done on this rewrite of this ordinance, or to add this ordinance, or rewrite the ordinance, I guess it is, what we've done is we've made something illegal that's already was illegal to start with. So I'm good with that. If that makes everybody happy, I'm good with that. But we still haven't done what we set out to do, which is regulate and restrict if there was a legal way for somebody to open one of these. I'm not saying that there is, or isn't, or it would be a good business proposition if they did. I don't have any idea, but I believe that there's a possibility. Maybe it's not in reality, or realistic, but there's a possibility that someone could open one of these type establishments without the legal gaming machines. I'm not saying it'd be profitable, or that would do it, but I think it could happen. And we haven't regulated or restricted that activity like we set out to do. So I have no problem with the banning portion of this. It was already illegal anyhow, let's ban it. We're going to ban the already illegal activity, we're going to ban it. I have no problem with that. But I think we haven't taken it far enough. I think we haven't regulated or restricted the activity, the legal part of the activity. We've banned the illegal portion of the activity, but we haven't regulated or restricted the legal portion of the activity, if it ever arises. So like I said, I'm going to support this today, and we're going to move it forward. But I wish at some point in the future, we could look at doing that portion of it, too, is if one could come in legally, have we regulated that activity at all? So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
I don't think that we've stopped anybody's legal right to operate legally in Putnam County. If they have a, an arcade-type establishment they want to open up, they would still be within their rights to do that, and-
Agreed.
So I stand in favor of this. My only concern, I discussed this with Mr. Troiano, was that under the enforcement action, you know, the first thing that you get is a cease and desist. And wanted to ask the Sheriff's Department, is that, does that go far enough for you on that first? I personally thought the $2,000 fine first time around was, had a little more teeth in it, but... If we could maybe consider that, I think a cease and desist order out of the gate encourages somebody to open up. By the time we find out they're open up, they've been operating, they get a cease and desist order. You know, it almost encourages bad behavior, because they know the worst they're going to get is a slap on the wrist at best, so... I just want to know what your feelings were on that.
Please do, Mr. DeLoach, come up, Sheriff, and-
I personally have no aversion to this version of the ordinance and the way that it's written, as far as a cease and desist letter is concerned. The five of you are well aware that we have taken enforcement action against those that are in operation now, and will continue to do so if there are any others that pop up under the radar, so to speak. So personally, I have no aversion to that.
And you were sending out letters anyway, prior to-
Yes, we have previously, to each of them, that we're open and operational.
Good. Mr. Adams, aye?
I just want to say I stand in full favor of this, and as long as Sheriff has no issues with cease and desist, I don't either. And thank you for putting this together, Jim, and your staff, and the Board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, Jim, in our conversations yesterday, kind of on the lines of Commissioner Turner, I was surprised when the first ordinance came back from the Planning Commission and came to us, that it was voted down, because I thought that's what we had agreed, is a commission to move that forward, to give, you know, some type of structure, and some type of teeth for the Sheriff's Office to be able to enforce, and the illegal ones would be weeded out, and the ones that, if there is one, and if I'm naive enough to believe that there is one that operates out there legally, the opportunity to operate. I am going to support this, because I think we need something. We have kind of pushed this down the road for a number of years, and something needs to be done. And I'm not for any illegal type of activity at all. But I do believe, and in our discussions yesterday, you did say that there is a way for them to operate legally in certain zonings and things like that, correct? If they choose to operate where people just come in for Internet access, to visit. I'm naive enough that, you know, I don't go to many bookstores, but I'll through Walden Books, and people go, and they sit, and they talk, and they read books, and drink coffee, and things like that. So I just want to make sure that there is an opportunity, if there is a true legal operating arcade, I guess, that they're able to do so. We had that discussion yesterday.
Mr. Chair, he is correct. There are opportunities for those type of businesses. Again, we're not looking at any simulated gambling. We would look based on the hypothetical that Commissioner Pickens presented, someone to open up an Internet opportunity for you. Your cellphone doesn't work, your home computer's broken, you need access to the Internet. So be it. You know, again, free Wi-Fi is available, but that's an older business concept that's been around. You have a coffee shop, if you want to offer those type of amenities. Those are things that we can look at in current zoning that we have.
This is a public hearing, so we are going to open it up for the public to speak. And first of all, do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this? Please come up and state your name for the record. All right? Seeing none, do you have anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? All right, seeing no one rushing to the front of the microphone, we will close the public hearing portion of our meeting. And Commissioners, we will, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve this first reading of the simulated gambling ordinance, number 2021-011.
Proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Adams, aye? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and thank you, Jim, for all your work on this product.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this will next be heard on April the 27th at a 505 meeting.
Good deal. Thank you. All right, our next one is the Comprehensive Plan Transmittal Hearing. Jim, that's you also.
Sorry for the delay, it's a large file.
Mr. Chairman, while he's looking at this, are we going to have a complete presentation again, or just on the changes that were made since we had our last complete presentation?
Just going to have a change, a presentation on the Cliff Notes parts of it. Mr. Troiano has to read by title only, but just the highlights, and we'll move.
Mr. Chair, if I may, again, Jim Troiano for Putnam County Planning and Development Services. I'd like to read ordinance 2021-012 by title, an ordinance of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, Putnam County, Florida, amending the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan adopted by ordinance 91-01, amending the text of the future land use element, transportation element, housing element, infrastructure element, conservation element, recreation and open space element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvement element, economic element, and amending the official land use map by area, and removing agricultural two, A2, as in parents', parentheses, land use designation, and incorporating those parcels with the unincorporated Putnam County to agriculture A, providing for conflict, providing for severalability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Chair, if I may, this is a work that's been in works now for a few years, ultimately heard by the Planning Commission, recommended to you, this Board. On March the 2nd, this Board met in workshop format to hear and listen to the nine elements that were presented through an almost all-day workshop, as well as reviewing data analysis and the future land use maps. The Board did make quite a few changes. The changes that were made, that I made in the meeting itself, were ones that were pretty simple. There were four other changes that took staff opportunity, working with our consultant, talking with our attorney. We've made those changes. We've had an opportunity to meet with each of the Commissioners to present those changes. So what I offer you today, based on this title, is an ordinance that contains those nine elements with the changes made as recommended, as well as the updated data and analysis. And we are now moving forward, at this point, to request this Board to review, consider for transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, as well as our other state and local partners in other surrounding counties for the transmittal of this draft comprehensive plan and future land use map amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Before we start public comment on this item, I just want to make sure that the people that are here that want to discuss this issue understand most of the problems that I've had, that people have reached out to me on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments were the density change from 12 to 24, and also the density change from agricultural areas to five, one in five. I want to address those first, and then I'm sure that I'm not going to change the mind to some of the people, but number one, to go from 12 to 24 units in a residential setting, you have to have an urban service currently on the future land use map, and R4 zoning, and all water and sewer services in place before that can be. So you're not going to see in a five-story apartment building pop up out in the middle of a farm field on the way to Hastings. That's not how this works. So that's not what we're discussing, and some of the people that I talked to just didn't understand that, that it had to be all the other stars needed to line up before that was going to happen. The other one that I was contacted most about was the density from, going from one in 20 in an agricultural two area to just having one agricultural zoning, zoning, which would allow a one in five instead of a one in 20 density. The existing Ag 2 is one in 20, and the new would be just an Ag, which would be one in five, is my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Jim.
Mr. Chair, just to, I'm sorry, I was trying to get to here, so yes-
Well, I got my Planning Commission Chairman doing their doing this, so I'm wondering.
One in 10.
We would be changing, Mr. Chair, eliminating Ag 2, as I mentioned in the title of the ordinance, which is one in 20 density. We would then go to one in 10, which is the current density for Ag 1, and that's where all those properties would go to. However, we would increase the density, allowing of one dwelling per five acres, as long as they're abutting or having direct access to a paved road. Well, the one in five was there prior to, however, the caveat was that you needed to do the point density scoring, water, sewer, roads, parks, being close to shopping centers, the things that you would need to support that density.
I understand that now. I meant if you was on a paved road, so we're good. Okay, so anyhow, the concerns of the people that I talked to, or the citizens that I talked to about this were, their biggest concern was we were going to lose the rural character of Putnam County. I'm sorry, but one in five or one in 10 is not losing the rural character of Putnam County. I just, you can't convince me of that. Also, you can do it right now. Under our current, what we have, you can do it right now. The only difference is, is you've got to go to the Planning Commission, pay 600 something dollars, or whatever it is, for an application, and wait three months for it to go through the government steps to get there, to ask permission, can you build a home on your five or 10 acres out in the country? I'm a proponent of, if it's not going to harm anything, I'm a proponent of not having to go through that step. We've had discussions, pretty, pretty deep discussions, you and I, about the Land Development Code, and when we get there, and what we can do while still maintaining security, and maintaining protections and what have you, that at that point, we can change it to where the Director has more authority to do something without charging people to go and go through that three-month process to build a home on their five or 10-acre property out in the country, if it clearly would pass. Case in point, the one that came before our last meeting, people had 10 acres of land that was clearly residential, and because somebody had drawn a line on the map sometime in the past, they had to go through that whole process. Even though they had proper zoning, they had to go through the whole process. That should have been a decision that could have just been made by the Director of Planning Services. I totally believe that. So anyhow, I don't think that this is going to harm the rural environment or the rural feel of Putnam County whatsoever, and it's going to take a level of government bureaucracy out of it, and I don't see any safety factor in it with one in five and one in 10. And I just wanted to state that before public comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I agree. Thank you. Any further questions from the Commissioners?
I've got a couple of comments.
Okay, Mr. Rawls?
I'm not prepared to vote on this today. I think that the opportunity was missed by the consultant to provide us with current and accurate data. If the comp plan was generated based on the data, the data's flawed, it's old. I don't know why they thought they gave us $40,000 worth of value, taking an old report, dusting it off, and then cutting, copying, and pasting out of it. But someone told me that there is an assertion that nobody outside of the county would even look at this, and the minute that it's published, it's all data anyways. Well, it doesn't matter if it's all data anyways. If you're using data that was mined in 14 and 15, and published in 16, and we're having this conversation, this has not been going on for years. this has not been going on for years and years and years, okay? We should not be in a hurry. We're five years late getting this process started anyways. I personally am in favor of throwing the whole thing out and starting from scratch, getting current statistical data that shows where we are today, not that we're gonna experience a point zero zero one percent growth over the next ten years. There's a lot of erroneous data. I don't think the staff have the time to sift through this the way that other people have, and I'm not coming up with this on my own. I have people in the background that work with me. And, and I'm telling you, if, if you'd like, I'll read you some of the comments made that I received, and it's, it just does, it's not gonna make us as a community look good if we publish this data along with the comp plan. If you'll bear me a second, I'll pull this up and read you a few statements.
Mr. Rawls, at the last meeting, the board suggested that you meet with them and talk about the data, have you?
And you know that my, my son's kindergarten, or my son's elementary school still shows up as workforce development education training. So it, it's being, this is being put together by people that don't know Putnam County, and then taken the, you know, I, I stopped looking at the data out of frustration. If I go through it page by, by page, I could punch more holes in it. That's not the point. The point is, we paid, from what Mr. Triano tells me, thirty-nine thousand dollars for them to supply the data. They were supposed to go in and do the, the research and data, get the data. They didn't. They took one that, a, a, a report that was presented a couple of years before, or four years before, that we'd already paid for, for another agency. I don't, I don't think that's getting the value for the money. So I, if the data is part of what we're voting on today, I will, I will be voting against this comp plan, the way it's been presented. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Adamsak?
That is my question, I guess, is, as long as we're just voting on transmitting this and not the data, with the expectation that the data is still gonna be gone through on some level, I'm fine with it. But if we're talking about having to transmit the data, so I mean, I think we all agreed that we thought we did, we got more out of the data than, I don't know, I mean, I, I think we all said that it shouldn't be our job to go through line by line to analyze the data. The data should be, come from the agency we paid in a fairly concise and accurate manner. I mean, some of the stuff that's obviously glaringly, we, we let them know, we've said it on the die several times, those things from, I, I didn't look at it to see if they were fixed, 'cause I was frustrated with the data myself, but as far as the comp plan, if it's just to transmit it and it's not to publish it with data and everything, I'm fine with voting yes today, but not if it's with the data.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak.
So I guess that's the question, are we just voting to transmit the comp plan, or are we voting to finalize the comp plan with the data?
Mr. Chair, if I may, we are voting, or should I say, you are voting today to transmit the, the element changes, the text amendments, the, the future land use map changes, everything that we've proposed to DEO and our other agencies to include the transmission of the data not to be adopted, ultimately will be published, but not adopted as part of the comp plan. I have that correct, Mr. Teep?
I guess my understanding is this data is already published in another format, so why are we republishing data that already exists from five years ago or four years ago? I think it's two thousand seventeen or something.
Mr. Chair, we do have our consultant here that can express in probably the best fashion why the data was put together the way it was. I know that he sent a response to each member of the commission yesterday, the day before, that identifies the, the rationale or the, the reasoning why he put the data together and how we got to this point. So that's, that's an option, if you would like.
Well, we're gonna hear from the commissioners first. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has something changed along the way, or did I misunderstand, Jim? I think last time we had this conversation, we were going to transmit the, the goals, policies, and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan, but the data was not going to be transmitted until we reviewed it and had more confidence in it and tried to weed out the things that we know are invalid. Now, I saw an email from Mr. Brian, or Mr. Teep, excuse me, Brian, Mr. Teepel, and, and he explained that, that the goals, policies, and objectives were not based on the data that we were looking at, they were based on different data that came from UF in different places, and so, you know, taking that information into account, it made me more comfortable that the goals, policies, and objectives that, that, that we need to transmit are good, but if, if, if it's true that what we're going to vote on today is to also transmit the flawed, the flawed portion, and I'm not saying that it's flawed, I'm not, I'm just saying there's, Commissioner Rawls is absolutely correct. There's things that are in there that shouldn't be in there, and there's things that, that maybe should be in there that aren't in there, and I don't know how Mr. Teepel's and his group, being from out of town, I know he's been around here forever since the nineties and, and he's well aware of what goes in Putnam County, but we can't expect him to know that the fern company that they call the fir, third biggest business in Putnam County's actually doesn't hardly even grow a lot of fern anymore. I mean, I don't know, but I mean, they're not one of, they're not the third largest industry in Putnam County, even by a swing shot. So I, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm kinda like Commissioner Adamsak said a moment ago, I thought we were voting to transmission the goals, policy, and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan, and I felt confident that that was based on current data that drove the goals, policies, and changes to those. So if we're voting today to transmit the data, I don't know that I can do that either with the current data that we know is flawed, and I, I mean, that's like the one he said about his, his kids' schools and has shown as something that's not even there. I mean, I understand that, that maybe somebody needs to go over that type. I mean, the basic data I feel comfortable with, but maybe not that stuff, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to answer Commissioner Turner's question, is that we did look back at that data, we've made, requested through communication with Mr. Rawls, and other comments we received from commissioners, we've gone back and Mr. Teepel has made those changes in the data analysis. Again, a lot of that-
It's still there.
I'm sorry?
It's still there after the change.
Hang on, hang, hang on.
The data that was provided came from a study, as we've referenced, it's part of the, the, the table or the appendix to the data analysis of where it came from. It's valid data at the time. However, we did make changes and added to, back to the economic portion, the housing portion, and a few others that we did to make those changes that we saw where businesses were no longer here, we updated that at the request of the board, and those changes have been made.
That answer your question, Mr. Turner?
For now, I mean, yeah, but I, I still think that we have some, some things in there that need to be changed, I really do, but the basic, I feel comfortable at this point that the basic numbers data that was used to do the calculations and what have you for the basic goals and policies and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan, the text amendments that we made are valid enough. I still think that somebody needs to go through, if there's some things in there, such as a school being, being called an office, or the third largest business in Putnam County is, is a, not even the largest fernery in Putnam County, much less the lar, the third largest business in Putnam County. So those are the type things that I still think we need to work on, but I don't want to hold this plan up if the basic data that we use for the changes to the goals, policies, and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan, the text amendments, if they, if it's valid, which I think that, that, that we've been assured that that portion is, then, because it came from a different data source, University of Florida, and it came after, after the fact of the, of the dates we've been discussing, the earlier dates, so with that, I don't want it to hold up transmittal, because we're still gotta come back from DEO with their recommendations, and we've got to address those recommendations and get that settled before we can move into the land development code, that we've budgeted to try to have somebody on staff this year to come in and make the changes to the land development code. I just assume that not take three, four years to be able to come in here and, and do the land development code or start that process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
So when you really start digging into data, what it shows, if you believe what was published from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen data, that we will experience a growth of less than five hundred people over the next fifteen years. Well, when you take a look at what's going on at State George Pacific, where they've got that new tissue converting machine, or with Seminole Electric, where we're gonna have over five hundred contractors in county just this summer alone, just that one project, anybody with any sophistication can take, or without any sophistication for that fact, can take a look at it and realize that the data is bunk. And, and it's not anecdotal when you go to the building department and you see the workload that they have. You know, we have to have a conversation about what we have to do to help bolster the building department to keep up with demand. I think if we, if we don't slow down a little bit and take another look at our county, we're gonna embarrass ourselves with the data sent out. It, it does, from, from one element to another, it doesn't line up and make sense. When you look at economic and you look at housing data, they, they both discuss, some of the, have they have similarities, but the data doesn't, doesn't make sense. So I think we need to get our forty thousand dollars worth. I don't think we got forty thousand dollars worth. I know a developer that paid around fifteen thousand dollars or less to have a housing study done, and their numbers are completely different than what you're looking at, but their numbers are, are more current. They're about two years old, not six years old or five years old, 'cause we're going back to twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen data that was published in twenty sixteen. I just want to keep saying that aloud. It's old, antiquated, and they didn't get, we didn't get our money's worth. So I'm in favor of hitting the brakes, send them back to the drawing board, make them do their job. I've gotten a lot of complaints from the public about access. I had concerns the very first meeting that we went to, and it was tossed off on Mike Brown, it was his fault, the advertising wasn't done right. There was only two or three people from the public, ma'am, you were here that night. It was, it was the only meeting that we had in public. It was, it was an embarrassment, to say the least, because the public wasn't here. And then when I talked to the public about engagement on social, on, on Zoom and stuff like that, it, it wasn't, we, we didn't do a good job. I think that we should have just postponed this thing at the beginning of COVID and said, let's slow down a little bit. This is a fifteen-year document that this commission will, will publish. I'm not afraid of embarrassing myself publicly. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to embarrass the public publicly, and this is our comp plan. I think we owe it to the public to slow things down a little bit and not be in such a rush. I, I will tell you right now that I want to get the land development code revised as much as anybody else in this commission, if not more. There's a lot of issues with that, but this has got to be right first before we can do the LDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, and I, I agree, if, if we're just moving the, the, the things we changed in the Comprehensive Plan moving forward, but if the data is still not correct, and we had this discussion yesterday, it needs to be correct, it needs to be as up-to-date as possible. So I would have a hot problem moving it forward with knowing the concerns of other commissioners that it's, it's not right, and I pointed out that the one business was still on there yesterday as we looked at it, so I don't know how it got on in the first place. They're a viable business, don't get me wrong there at all, but not one of the largest employers in, in the county, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Adamsak?
So I guess I'm just gonna say, from what you said, there is viable data that they use to make their judgments. Let's put that data together in a concise form and make it pretty, 'cause really, the data you have is pretty, but it just isn't right. So why don't we just take the data that was utilized to make the comp plan? 'Cause I don't have a problem with the comp plan when I read through it, I have a problem with what supports it. So why don't we take that supporting data from UF and the other places you referenced and make that a document and make it pretty with some of the pictures and stuff from the pretty document that we have and move this thing forward? I mean, that, that seems to me like the best course of action for the contractor, for us, and for our community, if in fact there is data that was utilized to make the comp plan, that's not the data that was provided with the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Turner?
My last comment was gonna be right along the same lines as him. Is there, do we have to take the data portion of this and transmit it to DEO, or can we just send them the text amendments?
No, sir, we're required, Mr. Chair, to send the data analysis for their review.
Even though we know that there's things in there that are incorrect?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And we can always update the data at any time that we want, but it's my understanding, after speaking with DEO, that's exactly what they want.
Well, I think it's a physical impossibility to get everything one hundred percent direct on a flowing document that changes, but we could pick a point and try to at least get it done to that point.
I agree.
And I, maybe we haven't done that yet. I mean, if, I, I don't really know what the answer to this is. I don't see how we can, I, I don't know if we need to have another round of public hearings for a, a week, I don't know what we need to do to try to find how we get from here to there to where we get things out of there, like the third largest employer in Putnam County is a fern grower, that's just not accurate. I mean, I'm assuming that's still in there, you know, and so there are things that are just blatantly inaccurate in this data section of this. You know, I think the goals, policy, and objectives of this plan are right on. I think we've done a good job, I think the Planning Commission did a good job, I think that we did a good job going behind them and making a few changes, I think that portion of it is fine, I just think we needed to correct the data section on this and get rid of the blatant errors and move this thing forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Chair, if I just may, just to show on their screen, again, this is a summary of the report that was referenced, historical fourteen, fifteen, published sixteen, and it just shows employers, we have Seminole Electric, Georgia Pacific, Forest Grows Fernery, Camarco Products, state and local government. They're not ranked, these are just the listings, we did make the change. So this is the data that we have, and at one time, this was the data and it was presented to us. If there is additional changes that need to be made, those changes can be made at any time.
All right, the question on the, on the floor though here is this, how, how detailed does this data have to be to accompany this document?
Good question.
And I think that's, maybe, maybe this is just too convoluted, we take the, forgive me Dana, we take the chamber thing and throw it on there and say, this is supporting data. I mean, how complicated do we need to go into the weeds on this? Because even though it's required, it's not like it was years ago where it's, you know, they're picking through everything again, they're looking at our policy goals and objectives more than anything.
Right.
So why can't we just put a product out there that, how, I think we got too convoluted here.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe asking our consultant for some information at this time may be beneficial to this discussion.
Got two people that want to speak first. Mr. Rawls, would you like to hear from our consultant before you speak?
I'd just like to point, I guess, I'll take it in a different direction. You list our rent, under rent, you have nine hundred and thirty-eight rental units that are three hundred to four hundred ninety-nine dollars. You really think that's relevant today, when you can't rent a twelve, twelve-hundred square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath for less than thirteen hundred? Barrington Apartments is getting that for a two-bedroom, two-bath. My point is, is the data is inaccurate, it's flawed, it's no good. And, and if, if we really get deep in the weeds, when you start looking at your percentages and you start looking at your population, it's wrong. It was, it was right in twenty sixteen, maybe, and I'm, I'm calling a big maybe on that, but we were coming, barely coming out of the recession, I think we really still need deep in it, to be honest with you. But we're a whole different community right now, our rent structures are different, our housing inventory is nil. What we say is that an overwhelming majority of the people that work in Palaka live outside of Palaka, and they do, and what that, that shows is that there's a huge need for housing in and around the Palaka area, but it doesn't reflect that in the data. What the data says is you're only gonna grow like four hundred ninety, or sixty-seven people over the next fifteen years. We're looking at Putnam twenty thirty-five here, folks. I think we should send this back, get it right, get current data, so when this is published, when somebody looks at this five years down the road, they can say, well, we're projected to be at this population ten years down the road, and they can start making meaningful decisions on whether or not they want to move their corporate headquarters here like Camarco did. We completely ignored the fact that we have a shipbuilder and, and down off of Stokes Landing Road, that, that's a large employer here. What about Veritas Steel? I mean, we build bridge sections here. We've got a lot of employers in the county that are much larger, and, you know, when, when, when you threw out Camarco in this, I, I kinda cringe when I saw government, because if, if I was a developer looking to move a company to Putnam County, and I start digging in, it's, it's easy to find out that largest employer is gonna be your school district. But when you add up total government, we, we trump all industry in Putnam County, and that's sad, but it doesn't need to reflect that in our data, we don't need to put it right there in your face. What I'm saying is, is we need to get the data right, have it reflect us the way we are, at least in twenty twenty, which is not hard to do. God knows, we had a whole year of sitting around our butts with nothing to do anyways, we could have been getting into this, this data, but instead, they took something that we paid for once, charged us thirty-nine thousand dollars again, and handed it right back to us. I think that's offensive, in my opinion. I think we should reject this thing, kick it back, and get it redone.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Adamsak, you're okay? Gosh, I'm ready to move forward. I think the board, I hate to say, I don't really need to hear from Mr. Teepel, I mean, any justification is just gonna- I mean, any justification is just going to, the board basically wants this data corrected. So let's just go right into our public hearing, okay? Is that okay with the board?
Can I speak first?
Yeah, I'll give you some latitude. Come up and state your name. Yeah.
And they say you don't get something for being chairman of the planning commission.
No, I get notoriety.
Well, that's the only thing you get, right?
You get a swift kick in the, you know, where. Susan Roberts, Planning Commission Chairman. I'm not defending anything, and I'm not making excuses. I will tell you that we received the data compilation the night we were set to approve the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives. And that was a little bit awkward. We had it a day, a few days ahead of time. I will also tell you that most of that data analysis for sections, other than the very beginning, were taken from other agencies and other departments within the county. And I agree, there needs to be unification. There needs to be coordination between the elements. And we do need to get as current of data as possible. You and I both know that working with the United States Census Bureau data is horrific. You're always going to be at least 18 months behind. As much technology and as much brain power as we have in this country, we still have individual people with pencils vetting pieces of data for inclusion in the United States Census American Fact Finder database. I've worked with them. It's a nightmare. We're always going to be behind on that data. But we do need to look at what's happening now. The last year, since this process began, we have seen a growth in Putnam County like we hadn't seen before. It's not going to be reflected in any numbers for the next few years. But I think we look at building permits. We look at things that indicate what is happening. And we include that in the data set. I am more than willing to take this data and analysis back and get you something that's more viable. I will also tell you that we had great deficiencies in getting information in a timely manner from our consultant, and I'm throwing Brian under the bus, and he knows I've done it before, because we wanted our data before we discussed the text of each of the elements. We got data that I pulled together personally and made available to members of the board that gave an indication of where we have been. It didn't give any projections of where we could be going. But I am more than happy to go back to the planning commission tomorrow afternoon and say, guys, it ain't over yet. And I'm more than willing to listen to, to your comments. I appreciate your comments. I will also say, and you all know this, you will never have 100% accurate data. Because until we get into a real-time virtual data management system across this country with official data, it's never going to be correct. So I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate your guidance and leadership. I appreciate your consideration of the goals, objectives, and policies because I really do feel like those are solid. We worked very hard on that. But we worked on that based on some initial data that I was able to pull together. A few things that we got from Mr. Teepel and from common sense of the nine members of the board, who by the way, is the best group of people I have ever worked with. You have assembled a commission that is of the highest integrity, honesty, and the highest impartiality as they have gone forward and worked. And I can assure you, unlike what's said in the paper, we are not in the pocket of any developer. So thank you for what you've done. You want to send it back to us? I'll catch it out in the back. I'll catch it out in the lobby. So whatever you want to do, we're ready.
Thank you. I got a legal question.
I'm sitting down.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate all your hard work and, and really leading that planning commission is, is, it's a big challenge, but you're doing a great job. Thank you. Mr. Commando, can we continue with the public hearing today? Even though the data sets are not what we want to be? Or do, would you prefer us to send it back to the planning commission, get the data sets right, bring the whole document back to us, and then do our public hearing? How would you like to pursue? How would you advise us to do this?
If people have come out to provide public hearing today, I would suggest that you accept that public hearing, and then you can always ask for additional public hearing down the road.
Thank you. That's what I was leaning to. I just wanted to make sure. So now we're going to go into our public hearing portion of this. I had, do have speaker cards. It's not necessary that you do fill out one. So I'm just going to call them in the order they were given to me. You do have three minutes to speak, and you will see that. You will get a beep. The trapdoor will not open and drop you down. But we will ask you to try to start wrapping it up as quick as you can, and we appreciate that. Our first speaker will be Jane West. And thank you, Ms. West. If you'll make your way up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jane West. My address is 212 South Fourth Street. I am here on behalf of 1,000 Friends of Florida. 1,000 Friends is a statewide nonprofit dedicated to sustainable communities and smart growth management. In addition, I've been litigating land use cases here in Florida for 23 years. In fact, Jim reminded me that we have previously crossed paths when he worked at the Water Management District. I have reviewed dozens of comp plans over the years. And as, as Brian Teeple can attest to, I have even assisted with the drafting of several. Based on the information that I have reviewed, I am very concerned that this proposed plan amendment promotes unsustainable sprawl. Now, I will say this. You got one part right. The density within an urban service area going from 12 to 24, that's a really smart move. That is absolutely what you should be doing because that is where your infrastructure is. It's the dwelling unit increases in the agricultural areas that I've got some concerns with. And when I say unsustainable, I mean fiscally unsustainable. One of the cornerstones of smart growth policy is to plan for growth in a targeted manner. Grow up, not out. Increase residential density in areas that have the requisite infrastructure. Roads, water, sewer, emergency services, all that stuff that government does. This plan amendment fails on that principle in terms of the ag uses. And so while it may seem like a good policy to increase tax revenue from additional rooftops, it is well documented that that return on investment for rooftops is a losing proposition for your taxpayers, for me. So this is a short-sighted approach on that particular aspect that will ultimately mean that we will be subsidizing those additional rooftops in rural areas. I understand, I have heard adages that you may be trying to create mini villages through this comp plan. And I strongly encourage you to reach out and talk to Sumter County Commissioners because they are struggling with a massive fiscal disaster as a result of the infrastructure demands in that aging development, which is only a couple of decades' years old. In the fall of 2019, they had to raise taxes by 25%. And then just last month, they increased their impact fees to 80%, eight zero. They had no choice. The cost of infrastructure was staggering, and that's for a retirement community with no school costs. So I'm, I'm going to wrap up here, but I, I do want to answer one of your questions, Commissioner Turner. The data and analysis does get transmitted along with the comprehensive plan. And it has to be reliable, good data and analysis. Otherwise, they're going to tear it up. So I, I think it's a very smart move that you depend on good data and analysis. I strongly urge you to table this agenda item. There's no rush to get this done. This isn't a developer-initiated amendment, and we have some great resources. We would be happy to work with your planning staff on getting it right. Thank you so much for your time.
West, hang on just a minute. Mr. Rawls?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate your comments, but I disagree with you on, on one point. And that is, this commission has made it very clear that we would like to retain our rural appearance and status in, in the, in the state. We do need some sustainable regulated growth. It needs to be meaningful to the county and the citizens. I understand what you're saying. But right now, your, your argument doesn't hold water because you can go into ag two if we don't change anything and drop a house out there, and we still have to support that house with police, fire, rescue, and trash collection. So you can't have it both ways. And the truth is, adding two houses side by side isn't going to be any more of an impact than having one house. So we, we have the plop factor in play here, which is where we just plop things down in Putnam County. That's what we're trying to wrangle in. We sat in this room, we can have two weeks ago and listened to St. John's County admit that they have a drinking problem. And guess what? Their, their problem's going to become our problem because...
Clarify the drinking problem, please.
They, 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 they are professing to be one of, if not the wealthiest county in Florida per capita. And as a result of that, the indigenous population, the kids coming out of school that might want to stay in the county and get a job can't afford to do that.
That's right.
And then you're going to compound it here in the next three to five years with this $15 an hour minimum wage and the compression of the payroll. So we've got a lot of challenges coming at us. But the one thing that we do not have is any workforce housing in the community. We have a lot of people that work in the community and live outside the community. And that vacuum that follows them is the money that's going with them to spend in the other community. So there's got to be a compromise. There's got to be a way that we can attract people here, get some really good, clean, sustained growth. We are going to be a bedroom community. Nobody's knocking on our door to bring in any, any kind of industry right now. We're agricultural. So there's a lot of new variations of agriculture coming out that the IFIS is working on. Not just spreading out, but they're, they're looking at vertical integrated horticulture as well. We have a lot of opportunities here right now. We really do. And as people, as, as people live, they need to eat. So we, we could maintain the agrarian nature of our county. But I greatly appreciate, I, I, when I first read this, I thought I was the only person in the world that, that picked up on this stuff, and I was so frustrated. And then when I, when I started doing a deeper dive and realized where the data was coming from, I was, then I was angry because as a taxpayer that helped pay for this, I don't feel like I got my money's worth. And then I talked to the gentleman that I have on the planning, the planning commission, and he said, look, we didn't get the data until right before the thing was, it was already published by the time we got it. Then I was really furious because they should have been coming from the standpoint of, let's take a look at what the data shows and then build our 15-year projection, rather than repeating the same thing that we've done over and over and over. So thank you very much, Mr. Rawls.
I, I look forward to working with you, Commissioner Rawls. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, that?
So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure that, because we've talked about this in other meetings, but we didn't have as much public here. Just because we go to five acres does not mean that you can take 100 acres and chop it up into 20 pieces. That would have to go through a PUD. That would have to go through regular approval and everything else. So it's not like we're taking up the county and saying, the new rural residential area is now five acres, and we're saying, you can just do it if you want, five acre increments.
10 acres.
Or 10.
One and 10.
One and 10, and five on a paved road. So it's not like we're saying that if you have 100 acres on a paved road, you can put 20 lots on your property. You can't do that. You could do one more, I believe, is all. So you'd only be able to do one 10 acre, five acre on a paved road, or one 10 acre, and then your 90 acres. Or split it however you want, but they're still going to do two lots. So I just want to make sure the public understands, we're not saying we're dividing every large parcel into five acre little pieces. That is not what this allows. Anyone that wanted to go more than what's allowed by the, you know, whether it's through having family members add on or building a second home and separating off five or 10 acres, that's the, the end of this. And then it requires it to come to the PUD and ask for, to basically do a development. So, I mean, that, and they, they could do that today. Someone could come in and ask for a PUD with a higher density and everything else today without us changing any of this. So I just want to make sure that understanding is correct. And just so there's more people here today that they understand that that's what's making my decision, is that understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and no one wants to look like the villages. I don't really think they want to look like that. I did too. I thought I got every email known to man. Mr. Karen Chadwick, your next speaker, please. Again, please keep your comments to three minutes.
Karen Chadwick, 179 West Strickland Road, Interlochen. I appreciate you tapping the brakes, you know, and working to get the, the data right and not rushing this through. I was born in Sarasota and watched where, you know, we used to go out and ride horses and everything, the rural area get completely overrun with development. And at the strategic plan meetings, you know, everybody, it didn't matter the age, gender, political affiliation, religion, everybody on the whiteboards, you know, we all came to the conclusion we want to keep the rural atmosphere and environment. That's, you know, that's why we're here. So on page, while the plan does say to promote infill, I definitely agree with that. Page 366, it says the maps are not clear. And the maps, I've looked at, tried to read the whole thing. There's a lot, you know, a lot of redundancy too in the plan. But the maps really, for the layperson, myself included, the maps are not clear as to what changes. I know it talks about 207 and 20 and 17 doing a study for those corridors. Is there any, any information, you know, where, where are those maps? Because the maps that are in the comp plan now, it's, it's not clear at all where the proposed changes would be. And I know in, in Sarasota County, the developers just went to the planning commission, and they got farmlands rezoned. And then the county was on the hook with partnership with the developers to put the infrastructure in. Then you had traffic. I can't even stand to go there anymore, you know, to my hometown. It's just, traffic is insane. They have huge sewage spills all the time. A lot of that goes right into the waterways, into the bay. A lot of it, like millions of gallons of treated wastewater, but it's still, you know, really nutrient-rich. So the infrastructure with this massive development always happening, it can't keep up with the new buildings. So I would definitely like to see infill and some maps. Where are you talking about for these changes? Because people, people don't know, and I appreciate the evening meetings. I mean, there was more people in Melrose than, than are here right now. I took a day off work to, to come here, and people just can't, can't or won't get out. Some of it's won't get out. But anyway, I appreciate you tapping the brakes, get it right. And please provide the public some information because, you know, a lot of people have seen urban sprawl. We don't want urban sprawl. So please do what you can to avoid that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, if I could?
Yes, you may.
I really appreciate your position, and, and your comments are well taken. We're not, what, what I would like to go back to Melrose, if, if, when you talk to the folks out there. You know, when we met the other night, there was a lot of people that are, that are concerned, and they're, they're misunderstanding what's in writing. It's simple when the Plaque de la News says, comes out and says, the county commission just doubled density. That's not, that's not the case. Commissioner Adams is absolutely correct. I can buy 100 acres today. I can do 100 acre PUD, and I can put 300 homes on that with roads, paving, grading, and drainage. Under the current comp plan, I can do it. Forget about changing anything. Focusing on the urban, urban service areas, the areas that, that we have right now that are populous, that do have access to water and sewer, that needs to be our focus. But the, the one thing that, that I would like everybody, and hopefully the Plaque de la News will get this right, is this commission wants to keep the rural nature of Putnam County as much as we can. Everybody in the room is shaking their head, yes. This is where we as a commission, and I believe the public is. Now, to your point, I think what, what was missed with all these meetings that were had was the opportunity to meet the public in person. I have maps in that office right there that are two feet by three feet that are colored. They're the future land use maps currently being used. If you took a look at those, they're much easier to understand. Those maps should have been brought in and made available to the public, but because of COVID, we took a year off. I think we should take a step backwards and offer the opportunity for the public to come in and, and get the anxiety level reduced a lot by showing them on the full-size maps. We can print, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get, we could do three foot by four foot on that machine, which makes it even more legible. And if not, I've got a printer that'll do it. So I think if we did that, and we had some meetings around the community, maybe five meetings in the public, one in Melrose, Crescent City, and Palacka, and then two in between, get as many stakeholders to the table and, and citizens, and then show them what we're actually looking at. I think they'll be on board, and then we get buy-in from the community instead of pushback because we've all seen a lot of pushback lately. And, you know, I can tell you, I don't think there's anybody in Melrose that, that was happy to have in the conversation about, you know, the, the assertion is that we're just going to blow everything up and look like Gainesville real soon. And that's the farthest thing from the truth.
It is hard for the public to, to find the information on the website. I mean, this is, this affects the whole county. When you go to the website, it should say, propose comp plan or something, so you can click on that because now you have to go to the minutes. You got to know what minutes to go to. You got to be able to find the minutes to the right meeting, get to the minutes, and then know what you're looking for. I mean, it's, it's hard to find. It's not easy to find.
Yep.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Sandra Kukarnut? Sandra Kukarnut? If you'll just give them all to Ashley, she'll take care of it.
Do we have to read all that?
You should have served with Sandra when I did on the zoning board. She was very enlightened, and she enlightened me a lot.
Pardon?
You might want to start her over, because she's...
Well, on the computer, yes.
Sandra, hang on a second. Reset your time. Hang on a second. There you go. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Kukarnut, and I've been involved with comprehensive planning in Putnam County since 1988, when I was asked to be on the committee that drafted the first comprehensive land use plan for Putnam County. I then served on the zoning board of adjustment with Larry part of the time, wrote grant applications for Putnam County and the city of Palatka that required knowledge of the comp plan, wrote comp plan policies for Putnam County and the city of Palatka, was on the committee that developed the conservation element for the Northeast Florida Regional Plan, helped the Chamber of Commerce develop the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Nature-Based Tourism Plan, and twice was on the advisory committee for the 10-year plan for Ravine Gardens State Park. Over the years, I attended many public workshops regarding future land use in Putnam County. I believe the last workshop I participated in was supposed to determine where we wanted growth to occur up to year 2050. The conclusion of every workshop was the same. Residents wanted future growth to be directed to the existing urban service and urban reserve areas in order to preserve the rural character and natural beauty of the county. They didn't want the roads and rivers to be lined with development. They made it clear they did not want to live in another Broward County. The proposed amendments that I am commenting on do the opposite of what the public wants. Number one, the 207 corridor on the proposed future land use map violates policies A142, A143, A161, and A162 because it deters continued agricultural uses of ag lands, mixes urban land uses into an ag area, encourages urban sprawl, and creates strip development along a state road. Number two, policies A1, excuse me, A149C44 and E12182C change the county requiring agriculture to maintain the natural hydrology and function of wetlands and water bodies to the county strongly encouraging. There is no mention of how agriculture would be strongly encouraged. As modified, these policies are ineffective in protecting wetlands and water bodies. Number three, policies A149C5, A19A3A, and E12182D change the county requiring silviculture and agriculture operations to follow best management practices to the county strongly encouraging. There is no mention of how silviculture and agriculture would be strongly encouraged. As modified, these policies are ineffective in protecting natural resources or surrounding zoning.
Sandra, wrap it up, please. Your time's up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, since you're going to be coming back to another public hearing, I'll leave you with these comments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Rawls?
We can pick up where you left off.
I had the same concern about changing it from requiring to strongly recommending. And I've often wondered how you, you know, you can't force somebody to go into business. You know, in speaking, someone who was talking to a farmer recently that farms over in St. John's County, the Hastings side, they told this individual they were changing their crops. And when they asked what they were switching to, he said, "We're planting Yankees." So it scares me knowing that if the land in St. John's County is going to be sold, the farmland is going to be sold off for development, we've really started, we really need to start taking a look at building a front. Not that we're going to be in a war, but if you drive up 207, when you get beyond 95, it's just, all of a sudden, the past two years has popped, and we're fixing to see that area that's south of 207 on both sides of 95 is going to be developed. They're going to have 2,700 new homes with all the coochie-wants that go along with it. So it's starting to push in on us. I agree that, you know, we can't require anybody to go into agriculture or civiculture, it's just not possible. I don't know how the county strongly recommends it, but I think this is where the folks that are in farming need to be encouraging future generations. I don't know if I would have the stomach to be a farmer. You know, it'd be really tough to look at a crop that you just had a really good year on and all the money that you make from it, knowing that you're fixing to stick it right back in the dirt, and it could be a loss. You know, so, you know, it's, part of it's going to have to come from the individuals that own the land. But back to Commissioner Adams' comment, a PUD changes everything anytime. The comp plan is a plan, it's direction, but it doesn't require anything. And I personally believe that we do need more access to shopping. I'm hearing a lot of frustration lately about all these Dollar Generals and Family Dollars that are popping up. They're just popping up everywhere. You've got a Windexia Publix and a Walmart for your shopping and save-a-lot that services very large areas. And some people travel outside of the county to do their grocery shopping as a result of that. As it becomes easier for people on the west end to travel to Gainesville, we're going to lose that revenue. But we've got to figure out some way to be able to fund this county, at least at the level that we're at now. And we're not getting the job done. We're missing the mark by a mile on the amenities and the services that we're providing to our citizens. We're not able to fully fund those. So we do need some sustainable, regulated, responsible growth in the county.
Thank you. Okay, Carol McDonald?
Greetings, fellow Putnam County residents. My name is Carol McDonald, and I live at 125 Hard Row. Can I take this off?
Please do.
125 Hard Row Street in Satsuma. As we understand it, the proposed changes to the comprehensive land use plan of Putnam County would allow the reclassification and development of remote parcels of land. This land, currently zoned agricultural and low-density residential, would be changed to allow establishment of high-density residential use, even if there is no infrastructure to support such development. This change would encumber the current residents of the county with the responsibility to provide roads, schools, water, and sewer, as well as fire and emergency services to the new residents of such communities, at an increased tax burden to the existing residents of the county. Even if reasonable impact fees are established to fund the necessary improvements, which is doubtful in this county, the cost will be borne by the existing residents. The establishment of standalone subdivisions is irresponsible and a recipe for the kind of slap-dab development we see in places like Pinellas and Deval Counties. Current residents of Putnam County would be advised to check the cost of property taxes in these and other urban counties where it costs exponentially more to live than here. This misguided bit of re-regulation would also change the character of our beautiful rural county. The commission needs to be responsible and let the current land use plan stand for the benefit of current residents of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Rawls?
Ma'am.
Ms. McDonald?
Part of what you said is inaccurate.
A lot of it.
Yeah, a lot of what you said is inaccurate. So I hope you have some solace by now, and if you don't, I'll reiterate what we said. The going from Ag 2 with one house per 20 acres to Ag 1 with one house per 10 acres is what we're describing. You're not going to be able to come in and do a subdivision or a large-scale development without going through a full-on planned unit development, at which time the citizens would have the opportunity to speak for or against that. And those developers would have to bring in. And we're going to be going through the Land Development Code next, and one of the things that we're going to include in there, I hope, is that the developer is required to put in all the infrastructure, whether it's draining, paving, grading, stormwater, sewer, not paid by you, definitely not paid by me. This commissioner does not want to pay for anybody else's roads, sewer, or water unless the developer's going to bring it, but it does not allow for that type of development in the rural areas. We're going to keep that rural nature. We want to look at the urban services areas. So you have East Palatka, the city of Palatka, Pomona Park, Crescent City, and Interlaken, those areas, the town of Palatka, they have water and sewer available. That's where you would see growth, and it's going to be up to each individual area as well. But we're not just sitting up here willy-nilly saying, "We're going to double the density of everything, and you can go build whatever you want anywhere." That's not the case whatsoever.
Correct.
You think that this has been the way it's worked at the Villages?
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
We're not going to debate.
No, I'll answer the question. So the Villages is a completely different animal. And the Villages is, if you study the Villages, there's a corporation that runs all of that.
Okay, Mr. Rawls?
It's just a whole different animal, so...
Thank you. Turner?
Yes, and please keep in mind, everybody, that they can, you can go do all that now. It's not like we're saying you can't do it. You can do it now. You just have to go through the same, the same authorities and same committees and same application process if you do it right now. So you could have a subdivision anywhere in Putnam County. If you could get it through the Planning Commission, the Development Review Committee, all the different things, you could do it right now. So we're not adding that. All we're doing is saying that if you own 10 acres on a piece of property in Putnam County that's zoned ag, you ought to be able to build a house on it without going to the Planning Commission and asking permission and paying $600. That's what we're doing.
If I could say one other thing. Ma'am, I...
Mr. Adams, next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll come back to you. I promise.
And to your points, I mean, if you're worried about the rest of the community paying for a small subset of the community or developers, that's kind of what I talked about earlier in the water management plan. We're already doing that. So that's what you guys should be talking about and yelling at us about, is why are 50,000 people paying for 10,000 people's worth of infrastructure? That's the point that should be made if I was on your side. The other thing is, as far as village goes, we're already near the top, so we're not, we can't raise your taxes because we don't get any room to go. So we're already higher than all the, most of the other counties. I think there's only like 13 lower than us. So if it's a matter of your property appraisal going up because your property improved and your property's worth more, that's a good thing for everybody. But as far as village goes, we don't have any room to go anywhere. So we need to drive that down. That's another point that you guys should be making to us, in my opinion.
I moved away from that area.
Thank you.
I hope I don't ever have to move away from Putnam County, because we love it here. Thank you.
If I could say one more thing. Ma'am, to the point that was made earlier, I had a customer I built a house for. We pulled the permit, the county approved everything. They're on an acre and a half of land. Someone complained about halfway through the foundation building process that there's a requirement for one house on five acres. And this is in a neighborhood where everybody's built on one and two acres. The family was, the project was put on hold. The family was really concerned because they had borrowed money to build this. And they had to go through a hearing to be able to get an exemption to build on. But all their neighbors came in and supported them and said, "This is ludicrous. They have an acre and a half of land where everybody else has one and two acres anyways." This is what we're talking about. We've got to, we've got to get everything cleaned up. Commissioner Turner is right. If somebody moved up here from Sarasota, from the Villages, wherever, and they bought 10 acres of land because they want to live the rural dream of Putnam County, and they find out after they buy the 10 acres that they're restricted because you have to have 20 acres to build a house. So even you're laughing at that. So this is what we're addressing right now, is saying, one house in 10 acres is fine if you're on agricultural property, not one in 20.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Ms. DeVito? Councilwoman DeVito, I'm sorry, I should have... Well, once you're elected, you're always... Once you're elected, you're always elected.
Well, hi. Good afternoon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. And I'm, okay, I'm trying to get this set. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Good morning, I'm Lisa Kane DeVito. I live at 108 South Main Street in Crescent City, Florida. First of all, I want to say I have not visited a county commission meeting in a while, but I want to thank you all. I am extremely impressed with your knowledge on a depth and breadth of issues and all the hard work that you put in for us. Thank you very much for that. The comprehensive plan for any county is about the hardest thing the county does, and I know, being from a small city, Commissioner Harvey is correct, I'm a city commissioner in Crescent City, but I'm here representing myself individually. Planning is hard when you have a small staff. That is true. I am here to tell you that I do not think with, even with the work that is put in, that this plan is ready for prime time for Putnam County. I appreciate Ms. Roberts' willingness to take it back to the Planning Commission. Couple things I want to say about my background, my heart's in Putnam. I've been here as a part-timer since I was a baby, went to church and Sunday School here, spent all my summers. My husband and I dated here, we got married here. I love this place, and we are thrilled that we were able to become full-time residents in 2017. I have lived all around the state in fast-growing places. I've lived in Tallahassee, where my parents were, and I went to Florida State. I lived in Sarasota. In fact, I served on a wastewater advisory task force for Phillippe Creek in Sarasota County, and the speaker before me, who raised her concerns about how all this would play out with the comp plan changes. The purpose of that task force was to clean up incredible pollution that had resulted from unwise, unsmart growth at that time. That was back in the late 1990s. I lived in Hillsborough County for 20 years, at which time it went from 500,000 population to over 1.5 million. I worked for the chair, Republican Chair of the Florida Senate Rules Committee, who was also a builder, in Hillsborough County very successfully, and he was famous for saying, "Growth alone does not pay for itself." So my concerns about this plan, and I did send these in to the Planning Commission, are that you are saying that you want to protect the rural lifestyle, but I do not see anything in here that actually guarantees that we will do that. One of my concerns was that infill be encouraged. I do not see anything in here that really encourages infill. And existing organizations like Crescent City, and I will wrap up.
Yeah, your time.
We have plenty of room for infill. I believe Palatka does also. The two things that I think are needed are correction of data. Your plan should be based on your data, not vice versa. You don't write your term paper and then go get the data. And also, Commissioner Rawls' point and other speakers, this has been the public...
Okay, Ms. DeVito, you need to wrap it up.
I am. I was just going to say, the public needs to have access to the documents of the plan and to be able to really comment based on their knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do take exception to that, and I don't mean to call you down publicly, but your email said you didn't have time to do this, and the public wasn't aware, and you, verbiage, especially South Putnam?
Right.
That doesn't fly with me ever again, okay? Thank you. Mr. Adams, that?
I just wanted to say something to Ms. DeVito. I appreciate you, the reason why I got into running for office in politics is because of you, so I just wanted to publicly say that. You happened to be at a meeting that I was at with another agency, and you spoke, and I decided not to speak and to run. So that's not for this office, but for a prior office. So you mean a lot to me. I appreciate what you're saying, and remember, you are on the council in Crescent City, so you have a lot of say in what happens in your city as well. So take that with what it is too, because you should be driving that building in your city proper, and we will support that all we can as far as infill. I think that needs to happen in Crescent City, Interlaken, and Palatka. Thank you.
Mr. Rawls?
I don't take exception to what you said, but I hear it from a lot of people. Dunn's Creek is the end of the earth. When you get past it, you fall off. We have folks all over Putnam County, and we listen to everybody. Commissioner Pickens is setting up a town hall meeting for next month in Crescent City. There'll be an opportunity to engage us then. We just had one last week in Melrose, so I know it seems like South Putnam doesn't get their fair share, but if you really took a look at all the areas of Putnam County, everybody has that exact same argument. You know, they all feel like we could be doing more for them. We're doing as much as we can with the cards that were dealt. The truth of the matter is, we just don't have a really good, strong budget to work with. We're very anemic. And, you know, part of the conversation that drives the changing of that is this document. So I really appreciate the conversation.
drives the changing of that is this document. So I really appreciate the conversation we had this weekend, and I'm glad that you support the idea of, I would like to give this back to the citizens and let the, let the planning board take a second stab at this and looking at the, I can't remember where you put it, about writing the paper before you look at the data, but that, that's an interesting analogy.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, Lisa, thank you for your comments. And Lisa and I have known each other all our lives. We did attend the same church when she was visiting her grandparents in the summer. And, and, you know, South Putnam, I still hear that we're the stepchild, redded a stepchild of Putnam County, but I think Larry gets it out in the west, and you get it up in the north. There's also, people have to get involved. They have to be aware, and they have to have an interest. And, and so that, that's part of it. I mean, these, these meetings were, were announced, and they had a number of them, and I think some of them were very well attended. So I just wanted to say that, and so however we move forward this, hopefully we'll have some more input. And I also want to thank you for deciding to relocate in your, I won't say retirement age, and run for the city council and give back to Crescent City. I want to, I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chairman Harvey, if I could ask your indulgence, just to clarify one point where I think we didn't understand each other. May I just do that in 20 seconds?
We need to move on. We got a very short time.
Sure.
We got another meeting at two, so. Last speaker, Mr. Woodward? There you are.
Michael Woodward, 517 South Francis Street, Interlaken. My home and my property is in Putnam County rural residential future land use.
Right.
So in addition to my general interest in the future of Putnam County and the community good, I have a special interest because the proposed doubling of residential densities throughout most of Putnam County's rural and agricultural areas will apply specifically to my property and my neighborhood. Two months ago, I mailed each of you commissioners a copy of my four-page analysis of the proposed text amendments that will have the effect of doubling and, in some places, actually quadrupling density in rural and agricultural areas. Today, I've submitted a copy of that analysis to your clerk, Ashley, I believe it is, and I asked that that be received as an exhibit to my testimony and made part of the record of this transmittal hearing. My analysis concluded that the county's own data show no need for county-wide residential density increases. If you've got some new data to bring on, I'd like to see it, and maybe I'll revisit that. But based on the data the county has, there is no need for county-wide density increases. Also concluded that any density increases should instead be targeted via map amendments to urban service areas where public services are available and where those services can be provided cost-effectively, and that increasing the residential density of rural and agricultural areas will result in higher costs to provide public services to those areas, costs that will exceed the taxes paid by the additional residents that residential development will bring to those areas. The hole will get deeper. As a result, the rest of the tax base will be permanently burdened with subsidizing public services to those areas at a more expensive rate because those services have to be projected out further into rural areas. That could end up meaning higher taxes, and if not taxes, higher fees for all county taxpayers. In the Planning Commission and county commissioner meetings I reviewed in which density increases were discussed, I heard just one remark by planning staff that seemed to support any density increase via text amendment. Mike Brown said some prospective developers of multifamily housing had said they needed more density in urban service future land use areas. That does not make a case for increasing the density in rural residential and agricultural future land use areas. A primary goal of growth management is to accommodate the greatest possible percentage of residential growth in centrally-located areas where water, sewer, and other public services are available and can be provided cost-effectively. Increasing residential density in urban service areas is consistent with that goal, and I am not arguing against that at all.
Mr. Woodward, if you wrap it up, please.
Doubling the residential densities in rural residential and agricultural is not consistent with that goal. It will have the opposite effect.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anybody else wanting to speak?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Adams, that?
So this goes back to what I was saying in earlier this morning. Infill has to take place by our enforcing the rules that are in place, in my opinion. I'm not for expanding any infrastructure, regardless of the comprehensive plan, unless it be utilized infrastructure that's already in place. By that, I mean, if there's a home in front of infrastructure that's not utilizing it, they need to connect. That's, that's state statute. That's what we need to start doing. We need to start utilizing that money before we start, like you said, having the rest of the community pay for the few individuals that are in that infrastructure. The rest of your points, I, I get them, but I think we've already said it several times, to go beyond that one additional lot on your property requires a PUD. That's already the case today. I don't understand how that, I guess, the best way to put it is that it's just the way it is, and we can do that today. You could do that today on your property. You could do a PUD and put three or four, I don't know what your size of your property is, mine's 20 acres. So I could do a PUD and propose I put 20 houses on there today. But I don't want to do that, obviously, because I chose to live in the middle of the woods. But I think we're still protected. I believe that, and I'm going to vote based on that, and I think that we need to start chasing other avenues of things that we could do better. Thank you.
A PUD will not allow you to exceed the underlying density limitations of the future land use.
We're not writing that yet.
Mr. Rawls?
So when, when you're considering land use, future land use, and current land use, the one thing that we, what we don't have, and it's spelled out very clearly in the data, if you read through it, it just argues with itself, is that we don't have any available housing inventory right now. If it's for sale, it's sold. If it's for rent, it's rented. If we're going to grow as a community and help take care of each other, we have to be able to have sustainable workforce housing for younger families, for our, for our children and grandchildren that may want to stay in this community, so we don't develop the same problem that St. John's County's developed. I think it's fairly selfish for people of means to be able to stand here and say, "Look, I moved here because I wanted this rural lifestyle, and by God, I made my money somewhere else and moved here, and I don't want to have somebody coming in here and building around me." But at the same time, when my seven-year-old son graduates from high school, whether or not he goes to college, if he wants to work in this community and come back and work here, where is he going to live? What is he going to build on? What's going to be available for him? What if, what if he just wants to come back and live here for a year or two and there's no apartments available? The newest market-rate apartment community built in Putnam County ever is 1987, and the two before that, we only have three in the county, the two before that are 81 and 82. We have a severe housing shortage when it comes to workforce housing, housing that will attract folks to come to the community. Unless you have some magic solution to his aging, which I don't, I'm going to get older. Somebody's going to have to take care of me eventually. And if all we have is a community full of old folks, who's going to come in here and take care of us? And if they do, where are they going to live? Are we going to make them drive in from the surrounding counties? So it's a double-edged sword. We've really got to think this through. Going to 24 units per acre, if anything, would attract a little more multifamily development, which we definitely need, because the newest market-rate apartment community, which is not tied to income, whether it's low income, very low income, none of that, is a regular, average, everyday Joe looking for a place to rent, is 1987. We're not getting it done, sir. So I understand what you're saying, but I agree with Commissioner Adams, that you can come in here and you could do 12 units per acre, and people will be jumping up and down screaming, saying that's too many, because you and I both know you can't physically stick 12 units on an acre. But if you go vertical, you can, and that's what we're talking about. So 12 isn't going to fit, 24 isn't going to fit on one square acre. You're going to have to go north with it. And I think we do have to have the ability to be able to attract those type of developers to come in, to be able to provide workforce housing for our kids and grandkids and future citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Adams, that?
And for the public certification, that 24 to 1 is a very specific subset of areas in the county. It's not county-wide. So let's just make sure we're clear on that every time we say it. It is not for the whole county. It's for specific areas that already have infrastructure, or if infrastructure is built.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
I assure you that Mr. Woodward understands every aspect of this comp plan. We have disagreed over issues for 30 years now, so this is not the first time we've been in here. So anyhow, we just, we don't have to explain to him. Believe me, he understands.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Appreciate your comments and your, your transmittal documents. Thank you. Okay, so I, what I'm hearing from the board basically is, we're going to send this back to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, are we done with the public hearing portion or whatever?
I believe we, yeah, you know what? I'll give one last call, but I think we got all the speaker cards. Is there anybody left? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public.
In that case, I would like to send it back to the Planning Commission, but I'd like to send it back to them and request that they try to go through this data information and by the first commission meeting in May. That's one month.
Ooh, that's fast.
If they can't do it by then, Susan, all you need to do is just come back and say, "We couldn't get it done," and we'll-
I think we can do it. We only have one meeting tomorrow. We meet the day after your first meeting.
Maybe, maybe you could look, talk to them and see if they'll have a special meeting. I don't think you'll be able to do this on day anyhow.
No, we can do that.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jim. Here's what I would propose, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Jim about this, so I've been sitting here thinking and listening. I think what needs to happen is the number, the numerical data for each section or each element, where it exists, needs to be updated with the most current data available. I also think that data needs to have some narrative analysis that brings in the current trends that we're seeing through things like building permits and growth that we're seeing through the DRC, through the planning department, and add, you know, increase, and put that in there as a discussion. And I think the documents that came from other departments within the county and from other agencies need to be included as appendices, but not as part of the data and analysis. I'm willing to work with whoever on that. I'm also willing to do it if I have to, but I think we can get that done, and we may have to have a special meeting. And if that's the case, we've certainly done it before. We can certainly do it again.
My biggest cry, my biggest purpose in trying to move this forward is, we've been working on this for, it's going to be two years shortly.
Coming up.
I understand it's the government, and I understand it's frustratingly slow, and I understand that we'll never have a perfect document, no matter what we do, but I agree some more massaging of the data stuff needs to be done. I agree with that, and I agree that it should go back to Planning Commission, and I appreciate you all taking it on. The only thing I'm requesting is that we take it on with all due haste as possible, and I know you're a volunteer board, and I appreciate so much what you do, but this thing has drug out to the point, this is only the first step in a long process of redoing the land development code and whatever. If we're not careful, we're not, we're not going to get it done either. And for the next, I've been trying to get this done ever since I became a commissioner, three years, over three years ago, so.
Well, we're at a, we're at a precipice now where we're close to getting this done. And what I can say to you is, as the chairman of the Planning Commission, I appreciate everything you say. I appreciate your concerns. I appreciate your work, because I know you haven't just put this document on a shelf, or you wouldn't be able to talk about it. And that means a whole lot to those of us who put in hours and hours and hours preparing it. It is not a problem to take this back. I think Jim and I will work with our consultant and see what level of support we'll get from them, and then we will make this happen, come hell or high water. It will happen, hopefully, by your first meeting in May.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this item or table this public hearing until the first meeting in May and give the Planning Commission time to, at that point, either request another tabling or, or have time to adequately look at the data.
Proper motion on the floor, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any other discussion?
Discussion, I just like to say, I personally feel like, you know, we, I agree with Commissioner Turner. This should be done as expediently as possible, but take as much time as you need to get it right. I don't want to rush this thing through and, you know, have, have, have something else. So you guys are now starting with the data and going in the, in my estimation, the correct direction, so you'll be able to come up, you'll get that corrected. And I really appreciate your willingness to serve and everybody on your, on your board, and I hope that we can somehow get the public involved. I really think that to ease the public's mind a little bit, they need to be at these meetings. If we're not going to take this on the road, I really think that the consultant, I always owes it to the community to go out there and have some meetings, or at least present the future land use maps and get input from them, because it would have been impossible to watch this on a Zoom meeting and really understand what the future land use map showed anyways. You know, you look at it in our book on any half by 11, it's not getting it done. You know, depending on what size computer model, I sit, went a lot of Zoom meetings with a 13-inch monitor. Good luck showing me anything in detail on that.
All right, we got to move forward.
Thank you.
We have a proper motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it.
Mr. Adams, I would like to introduce your board member, your commission member.
He's not here.
He's left. Ken Schwain was here. He's a member of the Planning Commission.
Just keep the topic on the data, all we're talking about today. So, thank you.
Mr. Harvey, you're not sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next, we're going to move very quickly on this. Codes enforcement, item 8A. Thomas, are you here? Page 682 on your, and get us flying really fast and really high at this point.
Address is 115 Boots Road. Owner's name is 115 Boots Road Land Trust. Violation is unpermitted work. The original violation amount was $84,018.50, and the total, total cost of enforcement action was $3,109. Property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. If the, if the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Mr. Moore, there was one thing. I, I came across this property many, many, many years ago, when I first got appointed, and there was a problem with a lot line. Are you familiar with any of that?
No, sir.
Lot line was real close to the property, and never mind, then we'll just move forward. Are the applicants here that want to speak in on this? No? Okay. Board, what's your pleasure?
In keeping with the, the past things that we've done, we've dropped the administrative monthly, monthly fees, and I believe if we drop the 1490, that brings it to 1619. Is that correct?
Right.
So I move that we, that we drop this fine to $1,619 and give them 90 days to pay.
We got a proper motion, proper second by Commissioner Adams, that? Any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next case?
Address is 902 Usina Avenue. Property owner's name is Matthew and Daniel Key. The violation is unpermitted demo and care premises. The original fine amount was $79,568.50. Total cost of enforcement action is $2,644. The property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are the clients here? Would they like to speak? Are the keys here?
No, sir.
They're not here. Okay, thank you. Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, in keeping with what we've been doing, I make a motion that we reduce the, the, reduce the total fine by the administrative monthly fee of $570, making it a total of $1,056 to be paid within 90 days.
Second.
$1,056 paid in 90 days. We have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next case?
Address is 115 Boots Road. The property owner's name is 115 Boots Road Land Trust. Violation is care premises. The original amount is-
Chairman, I think our numbers were wrong in the last, so I think we want to look at that. I think it's 1474. Yeah, it's 2644 minus 117.
You already made a motion. You already got us.
Yeah, what did he say it was?
It was one-
1,056.
Just settled on 1,056.
Well, we made the motion on-
We're done.
We're done.
We'll move on.
Okay.
I know, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Which one are we on?
We're on item C, fine reduction, 115 Boots Road, again. We're on item C, fine reduction, one one five Boots Road again.
That was the one I was looking at.
It was nine oh two.
Yeah, there's two of them.
There's two.
There's two for them.
Yes.
Okay, what?
Yeah, you can't, I was fixing to ask the same.
How come we got a code enforcement case on the same property on two of them? Is it like two separate things that they had the case on and they cleaned them both up?
Yes, sir. It first started off with the unpermitted work, and so the case went to the special magistrate, and we had an order. Well, after we get an order, if we see another violation, which is care premises, that has to be a second case, because we've already got an order.
Didn't we have this discussion on the same thing last month, and we just did away with the second one altogether just because it was? Didn't we do that, or did?
Oh, we did.
We did.
Yeah, so.
Should, if not.
Yeah, I mean, two cases, let's deal with the case. I mean, there shouldn't be two cases, and if the ordinance says we got to have a new case, then let's change ordinance. If somebody's already got, the government jumped all up on their ass, they need somebody else. They don't need to do it twice, they only need to do it once.
I understand that it's not an ordinance, sir. It's according to statute, we have to open up another case.
Okay, according to statute, so we don't have a choice. Well, that's not right, I'm telling you, if some, if the government jumped on you once on your property, then they ought not to jump on you again over the same property.
It's your lien, you can do what you want to with it.
Mr. Chairman, on this case, and because we set this precedence in the past, I move that we disregard the second case on, or that we completely disregard the fine on the, on the second case on the Boots Road land.
Reduce it to zero dollars.
So just make it a zero dollar?
Zero dollar, that's right.
Motion's zero dollar, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rawls, any further discussion on zero dollar? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you, next case?
Address is one two two Phillips Dairy Road. Property owner's name is Norma Jones, Darryl N. Jones, Wayne Jones, and Brian Jones. Violation is care premises. The original fine amount was twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and the owner's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Didn't we hear this last month with the gentleman that had, this is mother that had dementia and all that? I thought, when I read the narrative, I thought that was a gentleman that came in and sat here with us?
Yeah.
He didn't come in, this was, he just sent the.
Didn't he come in here?
Oh, I don't, this doesn't sound familiar.
No, sir.
It sounded so familiar to me.
In the fine reduction request, he, he put that, that is.
So we carried it over, or did, I just read, I didn't read this for the first time.
No.
Okay, maybe I did, maybe I had that moment.
Think there was another one on Philip Dairy Road.
Might have been. Who knows, I'm.
Might have dreamed it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reduce the total fine by four hundred and eighty dollars to a total of twelve hundred and eighty-eight dollars and give them ninety days to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Got a proper motion for twelve eighty-eight, proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
I just want to apologize real quickly for coming in and out. I'm trying to be in two places at once, be at the New Clerk Academy and, and also be here for the meeting, so I don't have anything this morning, so thank you.
You're fine to come in and out, we appreciate you anytime. Commissioners, any board appointments, start with Mr. Rawls.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I don't think that the one I had, the paperwork must not have come in, so I think I'm good for it now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
I have one, Norma Russell, for Better Place Plan. Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir, I have several, Mr. Chairman. First of them, I'm wanting to appoint District Three of the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, Dr. Martine Wallenberg, that's District Three. Also, I'd like to talk about the Value Adjustment Board. I was chairman last year, because I was chairman of the board. For, in the last several years, we have used the chairman and the vice chairman as the two board members that serves on that committee, along with a citizen that must own homestead property within Putnam County. For the last several years, that person has been Todd Dixon. Todd has been a very good member of that committee, and I'd like this, I'd like to nominate that he be, because it's not a district appointment, I have to nominate him, I nominate that Todd Dixon be that citizen member of the Value Adjustment Board, along with using the chair and the vice chair as, has been the, the way we've done it for the last several years.
So your motion is for myself, Larry Harvey, to be?
A board member along with Commissioner Pickens, I think is our vice chair, along with Todd Dixon being our citizen.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Adams, do you have any appointments?
That's all I have today, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Julianne, you're in place of county minister, please keep him in your prayers, Mr. Julianne, do you have any?
Yes, please do keep him in his prayers, and the only thing from administration is we extend our deepest sympathies to Captain Elam, Lieutenant Elam and his family and friends. That's all administration has.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, Richard Commando?
Nothing there, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, comments, start on my far right, Mr. Adams.
Um, I guess I just wanted to bring up the idea of, we, we had that meeting with the other counties, I guess it was the first time I was made aware that we weren't gonna continue our commissioner priorities thing, and it's a little disappointing to me, so I just wanted to express that disappointment. I really was looking forward to having those conversations in the public, and, you know, obviously it being the sunshine, that's the only way we can do it. Your reasoning during that meeting was that staff has already got a lot on their plate, which I agree with. However, I know my particular priorities weren't my personal priorities, they were the community's priorities. So the community's priorities are staff's priorities, are our priorities. So I, I don't think that that argument holds water to me, but it's up to you to make that decision, I suppose. But I'm very frustrated that we're not moving forward with that, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and may I address that for just a moment? I think we're gonna see a lot of that when we go through our budget meetings, and, and I'm not gonna completely resign from the fact that we won't bring up priorities, it's just that we do have a lot that we're trying to land right now, so, but I work, I mean, I represent you, and we'll bring that back up. Mr. Turner?
Yes, I'd like to bring something up right quick, and I would go straight to the administrator, but unfortunately, he's not with us today, and so it's been an issue that I've talked, that I've been talking about for quite some time, and it's got to be addressed, and I think it's got to be addressed at the board level. I think it's got to be addressed because he, I don't think the administrator may or may not be able to address it if we don't give him some direction. The building department's got to have some help.
Yep.
Guys, you can't suck blood out of a rock. I'm just telling you, you can't. We're asking them to do triple duty right now. Back in the day, in two thousand eight, nine, ten, eleven, when there was little to do and building inspectors would leave, they wouldn't replace them, it wouldn't be a, a big giant wall to hit or whatever, plans examiners did double duty, and they went out and did building inspections because there wasn't enough. I challenge everybody in this, that's sitting at this diocese today to go over there and look at the shelf in the building department. There, it, there's a line of files that'll stretch from myself to Commissioner Rawls or further on projects they can't get to. They're using a third person that's an inspector to do double duty right now to help some. We've got our plans examiners right now under so much stress that I'm telling you right now, we're gonna run them off, and then we're gonna be in a real pickle. I'm telling you right now, this is something that's got to be addressed, and it can't drag on at all. You know, I, I tried talking about it the easy way, the nice way, several weeks ago, it didn't happen. So I think Jim left, or I'd say something to Jim about it too, but anyhow, this has got to happen, commissioners, I'm telling you right now, it's got to happen now. It can't wait. If we can find another plans examiner, if we can switch Jason over to plans examiner and find another building inspector, I don't know exactly what the answer is, but it's got, there's got, an answer has got to be found, and this issue has got to be resolved. It's not fair to make somebody wait, what, three, six, nine, nine weeks right now. It could be up to nine weeks to get a permit at the present time, and that depends on how many times you get, you get comments back. I'm just telling you, it's not their fault. It's not their fault, they don't have enough help in that arena, and we've got to do something about it, where they're still working at those levels from back there. Now we're, we're doing probably, and I hate to give out numbers, but it's, I bet you it's safe to say at least triple or quadruple the amount of houses are gonna be built in Putnam County this year than were two years ago. We got to solve this problem, and it's got to be done sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner, I, yeah, I asked Jim to bring back some solutions a few weeks ago when I saw that big pile there too. Uh, Mr. Adams?
So going along that lines, I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I agree with you with fire service, and I agree with that as well with Public Works. All three of those areas, fire service has done a great job. Our director, Jared Grimes, has, has gone and found ways to get staff and to do things, presented that to us, presented alternatives, got grants, and did his job. That's the job of them to bring that to us, though. It's us to recognize it, but somewhere along the line, the director of that group should have come to us and come through to Mr. Suggs and said, hey, listen, we need more manpower, this is why, and justify it to us. We shouldn't be justifying it back to them. That's why we have an administrator, and that's why we have executive directors over areas, is so that they can analyze what their needs and bring them to us. We shouldn't be power playing it back because they didn't let us know that they had the needs. I mean, that, that sounds ridiculous to me.
Mr. Chairman.
I agree, we need to do it. However, it should have come to us, not us recognizing it and coming to them.
Mr. Chairman, seeing how this is my issue, can I drift? Okay. I didn't come up here today to point fingers, because I don't think there's nothing pointing fingers is gonna solve in this situation. I don't say that, that, that I wish that the department, that the director of the department hadn't have brought this forward, but I don't know that he hasn't brought it forward, and it's just everything's gone on that it hadn't happened. So you can point all the fingers that you want, you can misdirect this conversation all you want, but that's not what I came here to do today. I came here to fix a problem, because that's what I try to do. I don't try to take that problem and point fingers and do things wrong with it, I try to go fix the problem, and the problem is, we need more help at that level.
We do.
End of story. You can like spin it any way you want to, point fingers in any way you want to, say we're not giving enough help to JR, or whatever you want to do, I'm just telling you, that ain't why I brought this up. What we need today is we need this fixed.
So the, the reason why I bring up what I, what I brought up, I'm gonna respond, please?
After Mr. Rawls.
Okay.
Um, so I, I had to sit down with Mr. Troyano, and he, he, I asked him to present his budget to me. I've, I've been hoping that this board would be proactive and ask us to sit down and speak with all the department heads, or the executives that we have now, to hear the, the needs of each individual apartment. But Mr. Troyano presented it very well, I don't, if you guys haven't got a copy of it, I would ask for a copy of that. It, it, and it, it lays out a very clear cut case for, not only the need for another building official, and I, I stand side by side with Mr. Turner, this is, it's, it's nothing that I feel comfortable saying publicly, because I'm a consumer of the building department, and my, my business depends on that. But I, I've been pulled aside by the folks in there, and I, I was in there yesterday to meet with the farm marshal, and I pointed, I, I said jokingly, show me where the front of the line is so I can grab my file and move it to the front, but, I mean, you, you literally have a, you have a stack of files this wide, and, and each one of them is a, is a potential home or a project that somebody's wanting to get off the ground.
I appreciate that, I really do, and, and like I said, I'm on board with you as well, but I, I, this is one of those situations that I don't think can wait till the next budgeting process.
No, I, I think we should be discussing it right now.
I think we need to figure out a way to transfer enough money to his department, to either add a plans examiner or whatever, that way either Jason can move up to plans examiner, or they, I think it's Jason, or they, or they can hire another building inspector, one or the other, but something's got to be done, and this can't wait till the new budget cycle.
Can we workshop this?
Yeah.
I'm sure. Can we do, does this have to do workshop, have a conversation?
I am sure a plan will be presented very.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Adams, that real quick, and we're gonna move on.
I appreciate that, and I wasn't trying to point fingers, I'm just trying to explain that this one time doing it, it shouldn't happen continuously, is all I'm saying. So we have two different departments that are very shorthanded and very understaffed. One took care of it, and so we just need to make sure that our leadership is letting us know their needs.
Yeah.
That's the point, that I'm trying to make.
Thank you.
So I apologize if I came over aggressive, but my point is, we need to know what they need in order to give them what they need.
And we will be having budget meetings very soon with department heads, so. Uh, Mr. Rawls, you're up next on Commissioner Comment.
Excuse me, um, so I met with the folks in Melrose, like I said the other day, they're, one of their largest concern was the, the comp plan and how Melrose going forward is gonna look. They're, every, every pocket of Putnam County is very eclectic in nature, but Melrose is, really does have a very special clientele, and it was an interesting time, got a, got a lot of information, they're, they're interested in seeing the budget process, and, you know, I've, I've told them that we have challenges coming up with us as a commission. You know, this morning, we talked about the, the gentleman that's doing the line at the landfill, the escalation of costs, and who could have ever foreseen that, and right now, from what I'm being told, and we're communicating with some pretty serious players regarding buying lumber and materials, they're telling us not to look for any decrease in anything before October, November. There's just no, nothing to support the fact that we're gonna be able to build up any kind of volume and be able to get pricing drop, to drop back down anywhere close to where it was. So, you know, as a community, we, we just gotta get, get the message out there to our folks that we're all in this together, number one, and the, the anemic budget that we have in supporting our staff, I'm, I'm really concerned about the, the folks that are make, that are gonna go from nine dollars an hour to ten dollars an hour, and that's not gonna be enough. And then the folks that are between ten and fifteen, and twenty and twenty-five, you know, getting, getting them to where they can actually have a decent living, and who knows what the cost, and what, what the term, uh, living wage is, but have something that's, that's a, a little more akin to being able to go home on the weekends and relax and not be stressed out about going back to work on Monday and we're having to work two jobs, so. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to this afternoon, I noticed that the, the SMA is, is last on the list. The intention was not to make it about SMA, but about substance abuse and mental health in Putnam County. There's a lot of people that are gonna be attending this, and I, I hope that we can float it to the top of the agenda if possible, and, and.
I think you're likely it's fixed and happen, so.
Okay, so, otherwise, you know, we attended the service yesterday for Officer Elam, and it was, you know, if, if, if nothing else, Putnam County really does rally when it needs to, and it was very heart wrenching, my heart, I just, I, I told my wife last night, I cannot stop thinking about his kids and his family and the burden that they now have, but it was very well attended, and, and it was, it was, I couldn't imagine what it would be like. I, all I, all I always think when I left there was, I, I hope, when I pass away, that people say some of the things they said about, about me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, along the lines with the, the building department planning zoning, I, I spoke with Jim Troyano the other day, and about a, somebody having a problem getting a permit, and, and he has backlog, so, and Commissioner Turner, you answered the question I was going to ask. This can't wait till the budget process, this needs to be taken care of, we need to find the money, we need to get some help. We knew this when we all signed up, that our departments have been, you know, underfunded, and just because the money's not there. So I think we're in a better position, moving forward to, to budget for those people, and get quality people. You just saw that we were able to hire a couple of people from other counties, we need to be able to keep those people here. And so, so I'm 100% behind, you know, moving forward with that. We also need to, to work with Public Works to get there. He's now seven short, he was eight, he hired somebody, so hopefully he'll, he'll be a good employee, but, and to the Mark Elam family in La Crisha. La Crisha is from the Harris family in Crescent City, and my wife taught her, and I've known her since she was a child. It was a, it was very, very sad yesterday, but it was also very, it was nice. It was good to hear some of the things that they said about him. Gator Deloche, our sheriff, did a great eulogy under very tough circumstances, and you see the bond that law enforcement people have, such as firefighters, veterans, people in the military, to show up and their support. It is truly sad. They do have a few children of their own, and we're in the process of adopting five more, so you know where their hearts are. So please keep them in your, in your thoughts and prayers, and that's all I have.
Commissioners, I have two items real quick. I've been approached by Mr. Leo Granger to consider naming County Road 315 inside the town limits of Inalockin, the private first class Robert H. Jenkins Memorial Highway. So if it's the will of the board, we can start looking at that. I don't really need a decision today, but if you give me permission to go ahead and look at what that would curtail?
How you want it in a motion, how do you want it in a motion, or do you want it by consensus?
By consensus would be fine.
I'll move forward.
Okay.
I would just make sure, make sure you include the family.
I will, and I'll also include the town on that conversation. The other item that the Small County Coalition and Florida Association of Counties has brought up is requesting a letter from our board for support of keeping our Putnam Correctional Institute, and also keeping our work crews. Right now, the redistribute, well, the reallocation seems to be from seven to one, but they don't know which one that would be, and I think a letter from me, along with our administrator on behalf of the board, that we fully support keeping our correctional facility and keeping our work crews in rural Florida. By consensus, is that okay?
Yes.
Is there a consideration of shutting the facility?
They are. They're realigned, they, there's a consideration in Senate bill to realign those correction facilities.
I say yes, Mr. Mayor, and do everything in your power to, to keep it there.
But just, just real quick for conversational purposes, and hopefully we'll talk about, I guess, this afternoon, part of the, part of helping people in, in a position like that is had them being able to have access to family. And if they're incarcerated, if they're from Putnam County incarcerated in Putnam County, that helps with the rehabilitation.
Very much.
Taking them away from, my estimation.
We're all for that. Everybody's for that.
But if you could maybe mention that.
I will. We'll move forward on that, and I appreciate that, and thank you very much. Our next item, real quick, is our public comment, we have one speaker, Mr. Pete Ackerman. Mr. Ackerman, are you in the, there you go, sir, come up, and, you have three minutes, sir, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Before June 17th, 2015, most Americans didn't think much about the more than 700 Confederate monuments around the nation. And then Dylan Roof, a 21-year-old white supremacist massacred nine black churchgoers in Charleston, South Carolina. Roof's actions, along with photos of him posing with a Confederate flag, led to a push to remove that symbol of white supremacy from public spaces across the South. Soon, though, people began looking beyond that flag, and focused their attention on statues and monuments to Confederate generals, soldiers, and battles, many of which were erected as Jim Crow flourished across the South, and white leaders sought to recast the rebellious Confederacy as an honorable lot of freedom fighters. And white leaders are still promoting this narrative, even here in Putnam County. Across the country, a number of symbols have been removed. Here are some of them. Kansas City, Missouri. A week after a vandal sprayed it with a hammer and sickle, a Confederate monument located a block away from the border with Kansas was removed. Workers used chainsaws to cut the monument in 17 pieces, the heaviest of which weighed 15,000 pounds. Lynchburg, Virginia. A statue of George Morgan Jones, a Confederate soldier who helped establish Randolph College, is gone from the school's campus. Quote, "The college has no connection to the Confederacy, and thus, the presence of a statue glorifying a Confederate soldier has no obvious place on our campus," President Bradley Bateman said. Bredington, Florida. A 22-foot granite obelisk honoring Confederate soldiers was removed from the grounds of the Manatee County Courthouse. Page two. West Palm Beach, Florida. A monument to Confederate soldiers that stood off of Dixie Highway was validated when someone spray painted it.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments out there? Ms. Jones, please come up and state your name.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Dana Jones, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. I was just so excited for an opportunity to come before you today and announce that we have three events this weekend. I'm sure most of y'all know, but I'd like the public to know as well. We have the Bartram Frolic, April 17th, at the riverfront. We also have the Veterans Freedom Fest at the Putnam County Fairgrounds, and I believe the 24th Annual Save Rodman Bass Tournament. It's been over a year since I've said we've had three events this weekend, so I really wanted to come share that news. We also, of course, have the Mug Race coming up the first weekend, and more events thereafter. You can find events on our putnamcountychamber.com website, and more details about them. Please come out and support these events and the people who put them on. Also, just in the interest of time, I wanted to give you a quick blurb I got from a follow-up from the Bassmaster Elite Group. They sent me an email, and in the email, the lead sentence, and I'm going to read it, it's very impactful, says that 2021 Bassmaster Elite at St. John's River had more fan engagement than any elite tournament in Bassmaster history. That's more TV viewers, that's more streamers, that's more streaming minutes, a whole litany of things, but Putnam County should be very proud. I think that was just a very impactful statement, and I wanted to share it this morning.
Dana, before you leave, I, I happened to be watching TV, waiting on my wife to get ready for church, and I turned on the Bassmaster Elite, they were in Texas over the weekend, and if you haven't watched it on TV, it's really cool. I mean, they switched from fisherman to fisherman, and I was amazed, so, you know, I'm sure they did that in Putnam County, and, you know, what, what we saw was just incredible, so thank you very much for that. And it has been a long time since we've had three events going at one time, we appreciate.
So I was very excited, and very patient this morning, and thank y'all for all you do.
Is there any other public comments? Hearing now, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, whoops, whoop, whoop. I have one more comment, sir. If you'll unadjourn the meeting just a half a second.
It's unadjourned, yes. I haven't hit the gavel.
I said earlier in my comments, and, and I, I think that the impediment here is that they are, they're not allowed to hire another person. It's not just that they don't have the money, they can't hire another person unless we allow them to. Is that correct, Ms. Young?
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, in your budget policy, when the board approves a set personnel number, the, the administration is not allowed to exceed that number in any way unless board approved. Historically, the board's request is that that be reviewed and brought to the next budget cycle, and so staff and administration is following that cycle. However, administration and staff will be happy to look at the building department, and to bring back to you at workshop or special called workshops, should the chairman request a proposal in, from staff, administration, and the executive director for the building department.
So, you think, Ms. Young, do you think it would be improper for us at this time to give you the authority to increase that staff by one, at least on an interim emergency basis until that comes back? Because I think everybody sitting up here already knows that's the number one answer that's got to happen, and if we, if we study it, I don't mind having studies, but it bothers me pretty badly to study things that I already know to be accurate. So that's, that, that kind of a study just doesn't do well by me. So I, I was warning, and maybe we could go ahead, and we know that position's got to be increased, I feel like.
If the board would like to authorize an additional position for that department, administration can move forward with at least posting the job, and then bring back a subsequent budget resolution in order to move the funding in place to fund that, to budget that position.
I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have proper motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, under discussion, I think we, we need to go for two.
I'm going to say.
Yeah, let's, let's just, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Turner, could we move that motion to two people?
I'm okay with that, but as long as they can get one going right off the bat, and then let them do their analysis, we know they need one for sure. Do you feel they need two?
I do.
Okay, I'm changing my motion to allow for two, two persons if they deem it necessary. Is that good enough for you?
That's fine, Mr. Rawls, to you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that, that department is, that's the, the gateway to our.
Agree.
Yeah, I agree.
We have proper motion to increase the department staff by two, proper second by Commissioner Rawls, further discussion, Mr. Adams.
So, just because I've never been here for a budget cycle, or for saying the number of personnel that we can have in the county, does the executive management have any leeway in moving personnel from one department to another department? Like if they feel they have an opening for a librarian, but there's more of a need for a, a number for a person in Public Works, or, or in this case, in building, to take that number and still meet the number, but utilize from a different.
In a very limited respect, administration has some ability to do that. It would not be a situation where a librarian goes to Public Works.
No, no, I understand that, I'm saying it's for an overall number. How are we capping that number? Is it by department, or by countywide?
In the budget cycle, you see both of those numbers. Now, if the.
Which one's the hard and fast number? Is it countywide, or, or both?
It's countywide as well as division, so Public Works for that, and that's a good example for you, that's paid out of the transportation fund, so you really look at them by fund. I can't move somebody out of the transportation fund and fund a librarian with that, vice versa being true. However, if the transportation fund had a need to move from one budgeted department organization to another, then it's all within that same fund, and, and some leeway is allowed at that point.
So I'm going to be a yes for it on this today, but I would again, like to reiterate, I would like to see staff bring their concerns and their needs to us, not have it go the other way around, and if there was an opportunity, because under that same division is dog catcher, and if it's an emergency thing, you know, I think you could take a, a rec that you have for a dog catcher, or whatever, and utilize it, and still stay within that number for that executive branch. So I don't know that we need to do all of this, per se. I want to do it today, just to make sure we get that rec out there, but I think we need to have more data brought to us each time we do this, and justification.
Almost agree, but it needs to be done today.
Commissioner Harvey said, we're going to be talking to all the department heads, so that'll be coming up full here live.
This won't wait, guys.
Right.
And we need to take the handcuffs off our staff to do the job they need to be doing.
And if I could say this one thing real quick, just to give you some perspective, right now, if you go to order a set of trusses, you're going to be about 10 weeks out. You wouldn't dare order trusses until you have an approved permit. So if it's a four to six week process to get a permit, you, you, you can't order trusses until then. You don't want trusses delivered until you've got your framing package being delivered, so it just, it exacerbates the pain that we've been feeling for the past year, so this is going to be one way we can start helping to alleviate some of the anxiety and problems.
I agree. We have proper motion on the floor, proper second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, this meeting is adjourned.